I call to order the January 10, 2022 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request that everyone in the audience silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Bolton, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Proudly, Mr. Budzik. The flag of the United States of America, with the following: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as we start this first standard meeting of the 2022 calendar year, I wanted to share my gratitude for the chance to serve as your board's president. I also wanted to share an intention for what I hope our work can be like together this year, an aspiration which I truly believe is deeply shared by every board member. This shared hope is that we come together and operate in a collaborative, honest, organized, effective, and meaningful way together, and that we will be a united front. I am so excited to work together to navigate both the challenges and opportunities that lay in front of us as we support our district leadership to make the biggest difference possible in our community. This is an important and challenging time, so let's get started. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton?
President.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here.
Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, your school, community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any questions you might have. And I think I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting December 8th, special meeting December 13th, business meeting 15th of December, special meeting December 15th, special meeting December 22nd.
No move.
22nd? Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Moving on to committee reports, I'm going to ask committee chairs to have their reports in five minutes. And Ms. Bolton, will you present the committee minutes from the 1216 Audit Committee?
Yes. The Audit Committee meets virtually every other month, and it's a committee of community members, and the members of the Finance Committee from the board serve as members as well. Most importantly, the Audit Committee determined and decided and voted on and recommended reappointments and appointments to the committee, which the board has taken action on. We also heard initially the mid-year evaluation for our internal auditor. Also, that has a very, I would say, extensive report on the status of the audit that is taking place currently on a number of topics that are listed for members and also posted on our website. We also had an update regarding the Preschool Workforce Development Council, which had asked the internal auditor to kind of review the charter of the Council and then start to make recommendations about transitioning into a different kind of role for it. I want to also emphasize to you that the Audit Committee is particularly interested in following through and will be expecting reports regarding the development of our transportation efforts as we look towards next year and learn from this year, and also recognize the significant financial emphasis or, I should say, financial investment, and they will be expecting that as well. They got an update as well for the superintendent search and seem gratified that it's moving along well, and again, interested very much in the leadership of the district. I submit these minutes, and again, always thank the Community Audit Committee for their expertise.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Do board members have any questions? Okay. Mr. Morosky, can you please present the committee report from the 1216 Policy Committee when he gets back? Here he is.
Thank you, President Lindy. The Policy Committee, as you noted, met on December 16, 2021, in this room. And we began, we had a pretty beefy agenda, but I'll keep it under five minutes. I may look to Ms. Bolton for a little help since I had to step out and she chaired the remainder of the meeting, but I'm going to do it justice, I think. We talked about a lot of things, beginning with open enrollment, which has been on the agenda the past few times. I had a number of concerns about open enrollment for the past four years that are obvious to anybody who's attended these meetings or read minutes. And so we got an update. We had given an assignment to General Counsel to determine whether or not we were losing money or making money through this process. It looks like we may be making a little bit. We get a positive from payments received when districts, kids from other districts come to us, but then, of course, we lose money when kids from our district go to another one. Without belaboring the point, we are going to have some action items reported out on the next Policy Committee meeting. And what we had asked was, could the administration research and report what districts our students are from, what schools they're going to, and how CPS's diversity is impacted? And then I, of course, noted I would debrief everybody in this meeting through the minutes. Just to let everyone know, if a district adopts or if a district considers open enrollment, you have three options. One is entirely prohibit. Two, students from all adjacent districts, or three, students from all over Ohio. We've opted for number three. Another thing I thought was interesting, Mr. Lindy, I think, brought up initially, and then we sort of pursued, was what if CDA or Cincinnati Digital Academy was the only option? Like, could we leave CDA open for the whole state and close the rest? And the answer was yes. So we're going to continue to see what that might mean as we build out CDA to be kind of the best-in-class public online option in the state of Ohio. Ms. Bolton had asked for us to have a continued discussion on a subset of policies for student vaccinations regarding kids in athletics and kids who have severe medical conditions, like a Rosalind Condon, for example. And we found out that we are doing a good job with the mask-to-play, test-to-stay policy with athletics. Ms. Bolton clarified her concern really boils down to, at this point, that I think staff members who are working with our medically fragile students where there is literally no possibility for students to have any separation between them and their teacher. We then moved into a continuous discussion on attendance boundary lines. As many people are aware, we have some kind of weird gerrymandered neighborhood school lines in some cases. Ms. Bolton's been pretty bullish about this since I got on the board, and we got our maps back, which I'm proud to say. And so in policy and finance, we will be looking at the street level how CPS neighborhood school boundary lines compare to the city's neighborhood school boundary lines. That'll be big work this calendar year. Moving right along, board meeting assignment topics from November 22. We had Board Member Bolton assign a policy and equity that we discuss what it will look like to have in-person public commentary and online public commentary. We will take that up at January Policy Committee meeting. We discussed it briefly, but we'll discuss it further in a week. Tonight, you will notice a number of policies, and I won't go through them all like I normally do, that we are recommending for approval from this board. Of course, you can ask for the minutes in the board office if anyone would like to see the changes we made. In most cases, when we go through our sort of yearly board audit, we do new policies, we look at old policies, we merge policies, and in many cases, we just sort of update them with language. That's pretty standard, and that's the case for a lot of them this evening. The most exciting thing, I think, is to piggyback off Ms. Bolton, we're doing an internal audit of policies in the district. Mr. Lindy had brought this up. It's an awesome idea, namely our Equity and Excellence in Education policy, our anti-racism policy, parent and family engagement in federal programs, and purchasing of goods and services. Happy to say the internal auditor has been doing an amazing job with that process. But one thing I would like to read out loud to have on the record, she has contacted 30-plus members of management for input in just one policy, 2261, which is parent programming, our parent involvement in federal programming. And she has suggested that it can be time-consuming and complex, so when we do this in the future, we appoint sort of a sole owner going forward to work with the internal auditor. Moving along, there's a lot in here. Mr. President Lindy, sorry, President Lindy, I mean, it's going to be hard, but I'm doing my best. Transportation policies, we're talking about transportation this evening. This is one I wanted to highlight, Ms. Bolton, and then again, feel free to fill in any gaps. Now, we have three transportation policies, 8601, 8600.01, 8600.02, and 8650. Those are respectively supervision of transported students, transportation of students, and transportation by district contracted vans. It is Ms. Bolton's belief, and while I'm not dumb enough to speak for Ms. Bolton, I think I can in this case, and I have agreed with her numerous times publicly that we are being forced by vendors to operate outside of our own policies, and as such, we need to think more creatively about what transportation will look like going forward. And of course, this will be on our agenda as well for January. Present the minutes as we.
That's great. Thanks, Mr. Morosky. Any questions or things folks would like to add around the Policy Committee meeting? Ms. Bolton?
The only thing I would add is to Mr. Morosky's point is just the concept of transportation. Right now, all three of our policies, I think at least two of them are being forced to, as he mentioned, disobey our own policies to meet the vendor needs. But I think there is an interest in the board members and the community to expand the concept of transportation in that all of our transportation policies speak only of buses. And in the new green world that we live in, people need to be thinking in terms of safe routes to school, whether it's walking or bicycle, or whether it's a car and a carpool or what have you. So I think it's a real exciting kind of thing to be much more expansive about trying to think about what we really mean by transportation, and it will guide how we think in terms of those neighborhood boundary lines and how we possibly face the reality of the financial aspects of transportation. So I appreciate the chair's willingness to entertain rather a broad conversation in this manner.
I have a question.
Dr. Moffett?
I just want to clarify with the Policy Committee, you all said that the public attending board meetings was handled and it would be limited to 80, so it is, in fact, open to the public to come? I just wanted to clarify that so that people understand that as of November 22, according to your records, it is open with a capacity of 80 attendees. Is that right?
Eighteen.
It just says 80. And then, hearing of the public, if people do come, then will they not be, until that has been determined in the Policy Committee, is there no hearing of the public until that time for in-person?
That's what, and so that's what we're going to talk about at the upcoming Policy meeting. So the question came up a while ago, if meetings are open to the public, which they are now. And we're continuing to let people plug in, which, of course, the whole last board thought was a good idea, and I'm sure, you know, it promotes more, we got a thousand, over a thousand people watching right now. So obviously, it promotes access, so that's a good thing. But for the past two years, public commentary has only occurred on this. So the question becomes, if you're letting people come in person, as per state law and our own policy now, and hearing of the public is as it was, do you continue to allow folks to do it here? Because it's different, right? Like, if someone gets two minutes, you can, they're done. Whereas here, as you know, you can go, people kind of go over, and it's a little different. And so, you know, we've all expressed different opinions, I think, whether or not we should be able to, should we do both? It seems like an easy fit, but it's really, right? There's a lot of moving parts. So we'll just, that's the part that we haven't really teased out yet. And so this evening, I assume, we're going to continue as we have been. But that's the piece.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify for the public that it was determined November 22 that it was open, and it will also be determined in January meetings that the hearing of the public in person will be determined at that time as well.
Correct. Whether, whether or not it'll be, you know, like it was, where it's just in person, period. You can still watch, can't comment, or in-person comment and, first we got.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morosky. Ms. Bolton, can you please present the minutes from the, let's see, Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, a kind of a redundancy here on part of the Finance meeting dealt with the Workforce Development Council and the idea of transitioning to another kind of role. And it was our December meeting, and either in November or December, the Finance Committee looks at all and reviews all contracts that the district has that are worth $200,000 or more. And so we appreciate the administration, who are the budget line item, so to speak, for each of those dozens and dozens of contracts coming in and informing us about them. Two things that were new, there were some contracts, a few, that we asked that be held largely because we had heard some issues and concerns that had not yet been addressed. The other piece is that we asked those people in charge of those contracts, the administrators in charge of those contracts and responsible for them, that we want to start to see a return on investment as the, as the contract ends after the three years or five years of summary, but more particularly from year to year, we want to start seeing goals being set for the next year and seeing if those goals are reached. So it's not just a performative effort of presenting, but indeed does have something to do with return on investment and setting that bar for our vendors particularly, not necessarily for our administration, but for our vendors having particular expectations. We also talked for a little bit about the transportation memo that we sent out. We now are receipt of some of the answers, and that'll be important for us as we move on in finance on January 21, when the Finance Committee meets again. Appreciate the work on that memo and the time that it took, and I know there's some adjustments that need to be made along the way on it. But also, what we found out for sure was that we wanted to make it public that the administration, particularly the Transportation Department, reviewing whether or not there would ever be a possibility of having healthy, healthy start times, which are later times to start for high school, whether or not those start times could indeed be adjusted yet this year. And it was determined it would not be possible to adjust it for this year, but indeed, because, ironically, because of the demands of Metro, that frankly, we no longer use the dedicated, excuse me, extra routes, Metro made many of those healthy starts almost unhealthy because they were so late in the starting, which has a negative impact on our extracurriculars and what have you. So looking forward to next year, as we plan, we not allow healthy starts to be a casualty to our transportation issues, but we will be looking to see if we cannot revamp them in a way that is indeed healthy and not so delayed as to make the trip home so late at night. And then other business important, and we have to probably change this a little bit, we want to have the folks in the city that are kind of charged with development, we want them to come and share with us and report to us a little bit more information about the Community Reinvestment Act. And we're going to have them December, then we changed it to January, and now we're going to be asking them to attend February, which I think will be a good start for dialogue with the city. We also had the treasurer finally, the last part of the meeting, did report that she'd been having some good news regarding Fitch and a number of financial efforts that we have to make, and has gotten good response from the people that check us. I submit.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Do board members have any questions? Ms. Jones?
Yes. A very thorough report. I just wanted to add that in your summary of the Workforce Development Council, where you listed some of the successful partnerships and relationships, to make sure you add, not forget, that there was also a board-to-board structure in place with the board chairs that Mr. Lindy will be involved with this year with air board chair, and that was involved in planning and coordinating the meetings, the quarterly meetings. And so that, that was another, that's to add to the current collaborations, but we can anticipate that continuing. We didn't do any of the quarterly meetings at all last year because of COVID.
Great. Thank you for that addition.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any other board members with questions? Okay, I need a motion to accept the committee reports.
No move.
Done.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? The committee reports are approved as presented. Thank you very much. So moving forward to announcements, does anyone have any kudos or shout-outs or congratulations that they would like to share?
I do.
Dr. Moffett?
Lindy? I had an opportunity to visit the early childhood department, and I want to give them a kudo, the ones that I got a chance to meet, because they were out in the community and the schools working. I had an opportunity to visit the Transportation Department and Talent Acquisition, and I want to say kudos to them. Superintendent Ahmatt and her team, thank you so much. Your team has been very gracious to us this week. But I also want to thank the school administrators, the teachers, support staff. We had community members that were reaching out across the schools to volunteer and set up volunteering. More specifically, we had very parents reach out to Rockville parents to set up volunteers so that they could keep schools open to support staff and community. So I really, really, really want to say thank you to everybody who stepped up this week and did things that they are not necessarily supposed to, but that they wanted to support the students. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Other board members with kudos? Ms. Bolton?
Yes. I don't usually do this, but I think the situation of the district and the country's end spurred some of our great partners with this district to reach out and wanted to at least have an initial sharing regarding how they could possibly help us regarding whether we're remote or not remote, or whether or not we have staffing issues due to the COVID. And I wanted to shout out, and we'll talk more about this later, I know the superintendent and assistant superintendent are interested in this, Sally Grimes, who's the Executive Director, and Rachel Stallings, who's the Deputy Director of Activities Beyond the Classroom, and also Dr. Carrie King from the YMCA of Greater Cincinnati, reached out, appreciated to me, and said that they would like, like all of our other wonderful partners, whether it's Boys Club or other groups, many of our lead agencies, would really like to sit down with the administration and be able to see how we can continue to even expand and join forces and see if they could, either through enrichment programs or either with the use of staff already committed to particular schools or what have you, if they can find a way to meet with the superintendent and begin to augment our staff and our programming school by school, and indeed use the network of which we're so proud, and we're famous for that network, which has grown out of the Community Learning Center. So I'll be giving these names over, but they said this is just a couple of folks taking the lead, but as we know, there are dozens and dozens that helped us last year, but now I think they want to be even more specific and more, how shall I say it, permanent. So a shout-out to the, all of our partners who want to help us, but particularly Activities Beyond the Classroom and the YMCA, and particularly Sally Grimes and Rachel Stallings and Dr. Carrie King. So I'm very excited, and I think they would be a great help for us.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Others with kudos. I can very quickly share just a couple. I wanted to thank Vice President Jones for all of the help over the last week, has been very patient and chatted with me several times about tonight's meeting and preparing for meetings. I wanted to thank our board staff, Phyllis and Pat, for all of your help over the course of the last week, getting set up, and really want to thank all of the teachers in Central Office staff members who have gone the extra mile in working to keep schools open and available for kids and families this last week. I'm hard-pressed to think of a more challenging time, and I'm just grateful for all of your hard work. Last call on kudos. Okay, hearing none will keep going. Ms. Weinberg, would you please present the retirements?
Yes, I have a couple of retirements to honor and mention this evening. They are both civil service personnel. So please let me first apologize if I pronounce a name wrong, but we first have Sheri Bradas, and next we have Teresa Burelli. We want to thank these amazing individuals for all that they have done for our students and for the district, and we wish them well and best wishes in their future endeavors. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're ready now to move into the presentation section of tonight's evening, and we're going to hear first from CPS is Bright School Highlight, Robert A. Taff High School.
Okay, thank you. I am a technology high school principal. Should be able to push the button. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Ciara Badger, the proud principal of Robert A. Taff Information Technology High School. Thank you for inviting us this evening to share, highlight our school, and tell you some great things about it. Next slide, please. So at Taff High School, we have a living mission, is to ensure that students are educated in a caring, nurturing environment that are given many opportunities to succeed. I want to highlight the word "many opportunities." We truly believe in it at Taff. No matter what it takes, we're going to give them every opportunity possible for our students. Next slide, please. I talk academics. Next slide. At Taff, we have a lot of hands-on learning. We prioritize on student voice. We make sure that we ask our students, how are we doing? What can we do to improve? Emphasis on core classes, which focus on meeting students where they are and growing them from there. Students work toward certification and careers in many of the technical fields. So at Taff High School, we have cybersecurity, information support services, interactive media, and Network Plus. Those programs are two-year programs, so their junior and senior year, they dive into a program. The ninth and 10th grade, they explore and take IT foundations, and they pick one of those fields for their junior and senior year. Opportunities in foreign language. We Spanish. This year, we were able to add a foreign language at Taff. We added American Sign Language. Our students are really enjoying that, so that's a new elective for us. Also, in fine arts, music, art, and band. Band was also a new addition to Taff High School this year as well. So a new class that we created at Taff was structured organization. Most of our students have that, and that class addresses SEL. It also works on strengthening ELA and math skills and connecting students to the world around them, and team building and problem solving. Next slide, please. At this time, I'd like to bring our assistant principal, Ms. Neal, and she's going to share some more highlights.
Good evening. So Taff, you can find our students not just learning in the classroom, but you can find them learning in the hallways. You can find them learning in our newly renovated Career Checks Center, and also our wonderful green space that we have outside in our courtyard. Next slide, please. So Taff has caring teachers. Our teachers are committed to making sure that our students are successful, and they are willing to work after hours, catch up Wednesdays tutoring. They are here for all of our students. Next slide, please. As Mr. Badger has already said, our students have opportunities to get certifications in many of the tech fields. Next slide, please. Foreign language. We are proud to be one of the first high school students at CPS to offer American Sign Language, and our students are really eating this up. Our younger students, our middle school students, they actually get to have one semester of just exploring American Sign Language, so it's been an awesome, an awesome adventure. Next slide, please. Our education. Our Taff specialists make sure that our students see themselves in their curriculum. And our arts teacher, Ms. Coakley, she's done a great job of this, and she actually did a social justice project. Is that what you see with the Tim Burton artwork there? Next slide, please. We are lifelong learners at Taff. We are lifelong learners at Taft. Next slide, please. Taft is community, and you can go to the next slide to see our picture. We have stress-free Fridays, anime Wednesdays, guest DJs during lunchtime, and a host of other ways that we promote community at Taft. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Next slide, please. All right, so Taft is activities. We have a plethora of activities and clubs, drum club, Men of More, which they're behind me, they're going to come up in just a few minutes, Girls to Women. We have our morning announcements every morning, ask our students about it. They're very lively. We have our podcast club, our adventure club. So we have plenty of clubs that our students can be involved with in our school community. Next slide, please. Those are pictures of the different activities. Next slide. And Taft is big on community service. With us being in the West End, the West End community loves to see us out there within the community, and the community takes care of us as well. Next slide, please. Taft is PBIS. Next slide. And Taft is athletics. Next slide, please. So one thing that we did add that wasn't on the previous slide is we added wrestling this year, and we have about 10 to 15 students actively participating in wrestling. So that's huge for us. Also, I want to highlight our football team. They were the C-Mac champs this school year. So I want to highlight that. And we're going to go far in basketball this year. So I'm putting that out there. All right, next slide, please. We are Taft. So at this time, I would like to invite our Men of More to come up with our advisor, Mr. Dean Bryson. He's going to say a few words and introduce our young men, and they have a few words to say. Mr. Bryson.
All right, good evening. I'm Dean Bryson. This is my second year at Taft as an intervention specialist, and it has been a blessing to be here, to be a senator. Taft is a space of community and love. This year, I have been fortunate to advise the Men of More. The Men of More is a program of young men who continue to impress me in their growth in brotherhood, character, and academic experience. So a few of them are going to come up here and share their experience of what Taft is. And I'm really excited for you to hear them. First, we're going to have Joey Isaac come on up, and he's going to share his experience.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Joey Isaac. I am a Taft ninth grader. And what I like about Taft is our community and the teachers. Our teachers make sure that we're staying on track and we are never falling behind. I am a part of Men of More, and I am a Taft athlete. And Men of More, we make sure we have fun, we act like a family, and every moment we spend with each other is very cherished. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good day.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tari Meadows, and I'm a seventh grade student at Taft. One thing I love about Taft is the teachers and how much they care about all of us and how much dedication they put in the teaching and everything. I am also in More, and a few things we did was a canned food drive, and we went to the Free Store Food Bank and helped them. And thank you for your time and have a good year.
Hello, everyone. My name is Omarion, and I am a seventh grader at Taft High School. Here at Taft High School, we have a beautiful courtyard. We like to help the community in many different ways, such as helping the Free Store Food Everyone at Taft is like a family. Thank you, everyone. For your time.
So again, thank you so much for giving us time this evening to highlight some good things at Taft High School. Would you guys have any questions?
Questions from board members. Ms. Maraski.
I have a comment. How are you doing, Principal Badgett?
I'm good, sir.
Comment and a couple of questions. One thing that was in your presentation, but I know you shared with me at graduation last year that I just want to highlight for everybody, particularly the public watching this meeting, is last year is no secret, it was a difficult year for a lot of folks. And if I recall correctly, was it Wednesday that school was open longer that you stayed?
Yes, sir, catch-up Wednesdays.
Catch-up Wednesday. And what was the graduation? How many kids graduated?
We increased graduation by 14%.
14%?
Yes, sir.
During that school year. And I think that needs to be highlighted. Principal Badgett stayed there on Wednesday with the teachers for catch-up Wednesday to make sure every single student that needed the credits, because it was difficult to get all your credits last year, got their credits and increased graduation rates. So that's my belated kudos.
Thank you.
That stuff does not happen overnight. And now for the three young men, I'm going to put you on the spot. I used to be a teacher, so I'm good at that. You talked about your teachers, how much you love them. And I know you may not want to do this because they all might be watching, but I want to ask you what your favorite subject is and why.
My favorite, personal favorite subject is math. And I like math so much because it's just, it's so many new things to learn and ways, there's always different ways to learn it.
Yeah.
That's just why I like it.
I dig it. Thank you.
My favorite subject is also math because it's like so many different ways to learn math. Like, you would never know that you would learn A plus X equals something. You just would never know.
My personal favorite subject is reading because there's so many ways you can read something, like a text or something. Have a good day.
Awesome. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Maraski. Other questions or comments for our presenters?
I just want to add a comment. I am so, so happy to see you here. Ms. Neal, I absolutely love her. I've worked with her before. She's one of my favorite teachers. And I know you like math, and she's excellent at math. She was an excellent math teacher. But I think there's one thing you left off of those slides is that Taft is full of greatness. And so thank you so much for sharing, young men. I absolutely enjoyed it, and I would love to come visit Taft and see in person, in real time, what you guys got going on down there. It's exciting. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Vice President Jones?
Yes, again, I did what's already been said, and just to Badgett, you know, we've talked before, and I have a special place in my heart for Taft, even though I didn't graduate from there, but I spent quite a bit of time down here as a coach. But I've seen the progress, if I might say that, over the years in terms of where we were and where we're, where we are and where we've been. And I have to say, like, with these young men right here, it's hard for any student to come down here and present in front of the board, but it's even harder because they're younger, you know? So I think you guys are doing some wonderful things that, you know, I'm impressed with the, with the More men, always have been. And I congratulate you on achieving success and keep on talking and keep on speaking in public and letting people know who you are and what you're about. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Ms. Gray.
So I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts on some of the great things that I'm seeing you all doing, and I think it's really amazing that ASL is a big, big thing right now. It really increases the ability for many of our folks to truly communicate within the public. The more that all of us know how to do these type of things to make the world more accessible, the better the world can be. So I think that's really amazing. I want to send kudos up to, not because I don't like reading, but to the two young men who love math. That was my favorite subject as well. So, but then I also want to just really give a shout out to the fact that you're really exploring adding arts back into the educational process. Because you've spent a lot of time talking about, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic, and it's a really important part, but it's that creativity that you get from the arts, the ability to think and to expand your mind and to take one lesson and apply it somewhere else that will take you so much further. And so I think it is great, the work that's being done. And I think, you know, all of us are very proud of everything that's being done at Taft and all the work you all are doing to build such a great quality, young men who came in here today and spoke before us, knowing, knowing that it's not always the most easy thing to do.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden.
Yes, very quickly, I want to congratulate the leadership over the last several years too, that's been willing to embrace all future challenges. Many people bring ideas to the staff leadership and then the, and then also to the student body, and you embrace change, whether it's about drones or whether it's taking care of that wonderful courtyard and restoring it, but more particularly and especially about the sign language piece. I think that's fabulous. I think that's an answer for a number of our students and a real career path as well. Finally, I will say this, I came across something today even about when Taft, current Taft was built, and there were about 18 community leaders that came from the neighborhood, and 18 different people. And they were, they were threatening us that we better build this school. And they were doubting whether or not we would go through with it, and we had to assure them. And one night, they came to a board meeting, the folks in the West End that loved Taft, and they made each board member sign that we would continue to build that school. Your neighborhood loves you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Ms. Weinberg?
I guess just to add, thank you so much for coming. I look forward to coming to your school and seeing real time some of the great things that you have already started to talk about here tonight. So again, thank you. Kudos to everything that you're doing and that you will do.
People, thank you again very much. And just as a, as a dad and as a former seventh grade teacher, and I don't think it's easy to get up in a room like this, like Vice President Jones said, I just want to echo what she said and say thank you and have a wonderful evening. Okay, so we're going to move on to our second presentation, which is from Ms. Ahmatt and Ms. Boyle on board appreciation.
Good evening. January is school board appreciation month. It is time to express our gratitude for our CPS school board members. Thank you for all that you do, and we know that this is a labor of love. We appreciate how much you care about each one of our 36,000 students and the staff that serve them. It is more important than ever in our Cincinnati community to support public education so that today's students are prepared to be protective citizens and leaders of tomorrow. The planters that are in front of you have been designed and created by some of our students and staff from Chase Elementary, Clark Montessori, Seala Park School, Witten Hills Academy, and Woodward High School. I'd like to give a shout out to our incredibly talented students. And I hope that when you look at these parts, it is a representation of growth, joy, and gratitude. Thank you so much and enjoy.
Thank you very much. Board members, any questions or comments before we keep going? Just to say thank you? Okay. This is beautiful. Thank you very much.
So I'm a little envious. I'm going to have to hire some of these students to make me some more pot because I'm loving these. Awesome. Thank you.
I'm just going to say that I'm going to try very hard to do right by the way, by this. My wife and I kill any plant that comes to live in our house. But I'm going to, there's always room for improvement, so we're going to use this as a, as a reason to try. So thank you. Much invite any other comments or thank yous on this before we keep moving? Okay, all right. Well, thank you again. And we'll move then to presentation number three, which is the health and safety update from Ms. Bunty.
Yes, and there will be several people joining us for the presentation. This is a health and safety presentation, and our first presenters are our friends from Children's Hospital. And do we have them online for us? Yes. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Robert Kahn, Dr. Patty Manning, Dr. Andrew Beck, and Susan Craig, who will be presenting the medical expert report this evening.
Great, I think I'll be starting off. Quick sound check, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So the first slide, please. First, I just want to thank all of that the board and the teachers and the staff are doing for all the kids. We share so many kids with you at, here at Children's Hospital, and we know how hard you all have worked to deliver the best possible education in really tough times. What we were asked to try to cover is a little bit of framing that I'll start off with about balancing outcomes. Patty Manning will cover the state of COVID for kids. Andy Beck will cover COVID in Greater Cincinnati more broadly. And Susan will talk about isolation and quarantine guidelines. And then we'll finish with some answers to specific questions the board posed in advance. Next slide, please. I think one of the first things we wanted to do is just frame that there's always a number of outcomes that we're trying to achieve at the same time. And while we're here tonight to really focus on COVID, what we want to emphasize is there are both short and long-term effects to COVID. It's not just about the kids, it's the teachers and staff as well. And as we talked about last year when I presented, secondary infections for younger siblings, parents, and grandparents. So how do we balance all of the COVID with the social, emotional health of students and staff, the need to achieve academic outcomes, stability of work for parents, the income of the economy, and safe staffing of the district? And I just felt based on prior discussions, it's important to name all of them and know that it's a balancing act and how important it is for us to work together to see each other's perspectives. And pediatrics hasn't always been great at that, at this early on in the epidemic. There was a real focus on kids in school without adequate focus to teachers and staff. And I think we, pediatricians nationally lost some of the trust of teachers. Next slide. I want to re-present this also an image from last year, just to emphasize, this is what we call like the Swiss cheese model of safety, and in particular in relation to pandemics. And what you're trying to do is uncouple what's happening in the community with COVID all the way to the left, to the well-being and safety, all the way to the right of what's happening in the school. And the point here is that no single slice of cheese, no single defense, masking, spacing, testing, vaccination, no one slice alone is enough to stop the spread. And so when we pull one of those out, it's really not the right, right way to frame the interventions. We have to talk about the bundle and putting all of the pieces together in a reliable and effective way. Next slide. Just to emphasize more visibly what each of those slices are before we move on to what's happening with COVID, very important, our deep trust in the effectiveness and safety of vaccination for all those eligible, and the importance of universal masking. And there is more emphasis now on quality masking, right? Covering the nose for sure, and that N95, K95 masks are better than surgical masks, surgical masks are better than cloth masks. Just want to highlight those two. The rest, including distancing and ventilation, you'll have heard before. But again, we do know how to control the epidemic, and reliable implementation of these is critical. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Manning on the next slide.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just doing a sound check that I can be heard. So I'm just here as your, as the chief of staff of Cincinnati Children's Hospital to let you know a little bit about what we're seeing in the past couple of weeks in the hospital. And that is that the cases of children hospitalized with COVID and for COVID have actually not just quadrupled, they're up about five times now as of today what they were two weeks ago. So we are seeing much higher numbers of children hospitalized with COVID than we have at any time in the pandemic. And it's just a volume that we, I never dreamed we would see. We do see children who are hospitalized both with and for COVID. And by that, I mean we have children who are primarily hospitalized because they are sick with COVID. They have pneumonia, they have respiratory distress or exacerbation of their asthma. We have children who have chronic disease that is exacerbated probably by a comorbid infection with COVID. And then we have children who are incidentally positive with COVID. They're in for something else, and we test them because they're going to go to the OR and they happen to have COVID. But it's a real mix of children. In fact, we have In fact, we have a number of children with mental health issues that also happen to be COVID positive. So not everyone that's hospitalized has COVID or is sick from COVID, but we still have a number of children who are quite ill with COVID, including children in our intensive care unit. Almost all of the children that are hospitalized are either unvaccinated or unable to be vaccinated. So they're under age five. We have a number of babies that are hospitalized with COVID. They cannot be vaccinated. And almost all of the children under age five who are COVID positive, we are able to trace a contact to somebody who's unvaccinated in their life, a caregiver, a parent, a family member. So fortunately, as you just heard from Dr. Kahn, we still have a number of resources called Protect Children, and vaccination remains the number one new tool of that bundle that you just heard about that we want to make available to children over age five. And now boosters are available for children over age 12. And you've heard about masking, distancing, hygiene. All these things can work in combination to keep kids safe. And that when we can, we test to isolate, but we know that testing is under a lot of pressure these days. And so I'll stop there.
And then, good evening, everybody. My name's Andy Beck. I'm another one of the pediatricians at Cincinnati Children's. I want to build on the data that Dr. Manning just showed and kind of expand the view to everyone within our region. And I'm gonna start with these two charts. They are both set up in much the same way. The chart on the upper left is looking at the number of COVID positive patients in all of our regional hospitals, adult and children, adult and pediatric. And what I want to highlight here on the Y-axis is that number of patient. The X-axis is time. And the spike that you're seeing toward the far right of that figure illustrate the extent of the upward slope that we're experiencing with Omicron. The slide at the bottom right is set up in much the same way, except it's looking at the number of positive COVID-19 patients in our regional intensive care units. And I think if you click, there's a little animation here just to provide a little bit more definition to what you're seeing. And so if you advance here, I'll tell you what shows up. First, on the hospitalization slide, you'll see that we are now at record numbers. There are 958 individuals in regional hospitals as of earlier today. And we expect that that increase in numbers of patients in our hospital beds will ultimately lead to rises still higher in our ICU beds. As Patty just mentioned, in our pediatric facility, this is also true in our adult facilities where most individuals who are in the hospital are either unvaccinated or are vaccinated with either immunosuppression or a chronic condition. This is leading to our hospitals being quite full. And given the degree at which our staff is also stretched, we are finding our way into, quote, "critical operations." You advance to the next slide. We are seeing this increase because of the rapid rise in cases. The figure on the left is showing the Omicron surge, looking at the last couple of months' worth of data. We're seeing the rapidly rising rate of new cases as this highly transmissible variant took hold. On the right is looking at the same data except by certain age buckets. And I do just want to highlight here those who are 0 to 19, 20 to 29, 30 to 39, and 40 to 49. I'll tell you that the rate of rise, the steepness of the curve, is highest among those who are 20 to 39 years old. We know that these are the same age groups that have the lowest vaccination rates. There are also the same age groups that are often parents of our young children. And so we've been watching this and expecting that we may see some additional rises among our pediatric population. Next slide. We're also watching our patterns here in the lower part of the state with other population centers across Ohio. So this is a four-panelled figure. I'll direct your attention first to the bottom right. This is the infection curve for Hamilton County, Ohio, since the beginning of the pandemic, now almost two years ago. You can kind of see we went through peaks and valleys. And the circled part on the far right is the Omicron surge. Now, if you look to the other parts of this figure, you see Cuyahoga County in the top left. That's Cleveland. Montgomery County in the top right. Franklin County or Columbus in the bottom left. And you can see, and I'm gonna advance to the next slide because you can see it's still better here, that we and Franklin County, so Cincinnati and Columbus, are lagging Cuyahoga County or Cleveland by two to three weeks. So what this means is that over the next two or three weeks, we expect to see continued increase in the number of cases. Our hope is that after that point, we will see a degradation of that transmission and a return back to lower rates of transmission. We do expect hospitalization numbers to lag still further. And we've been watching the northern parts of the state. They're still seeing elevated rates of individuals in their hospital beds. Next slide. And lastly, I did just want to highlight some vaccination data. We are looking intently at the percentage of the population who has started, completed, or had a booster dose for their vaccination by age group. In this chart, you can see across by certain age groups, the blue line are those who have had at least one dose. The orange represents those who have had their completed initial series. And the purple represents those who have had a booster vaccine. For a region, we find ourselves at about 57% have had at least two doses, and about 40 or lower percent has had a booster dose. This is putting us at risk because of the vast numbers who are getting sick and then finding their way into the hospital setting. Just to underscore the point before I transition, the main things that we're really encouraging at this stage are effective masking, vaccination for those who are eligible, and boosters for those who are eligible. Next slide.
Thank you, Andy. I'm Susan Sprague, the Director of Community Health. Let me make sure, can I be heard? Yes. Okay, great. So I am going to, as the last part of the presentation part, describe the recently updated CDC guidance for isolation and quarantine released for schools to consider as they're setting their own internal policy. This has been mostly in response to some emerging evidence for when people are most infectious, although it is also relevant to the astronomical rise in cases we've seen in recent weeks. I want to start with a reminder of the difference between the two, between isolation and quarantine. As you may recall, isolation is what you do if you are infected with COVID-19. And quarantine is what you do when you've been exposed to someone else who's been infected with COVID-19. So if we start on the slide here, this is isolation. You're going to, with the new CDC guidance, start on day zero, which is the first day of your COVID symptoms. Or if you never have symptoms, it's the day of your positive test. On days one through five, you will isolate. This means you stay home, avoid contact with others, even members of your household as much as possible, although we know how challenging that can be with young ones and parents and families. Now, the new part is, once you get to day five, there's a series of questions to consider. Have you been fever-free for at least 24 hours without medication? Are your symptoms improving? And could you wear a mask, strictly wear a well-fitting mask for the following five days? If the answer to all of those questions is yes, then you can leave isolation as long as you wear that well-fitting mask whenever you're around others. If the answer to any of those questions is no, then you should continue to isolate for five additional days. Now, we'll turn to quarantine on the next slide. The CDC really divides quarantine guidance into two categories. The first is for people who are up to date on all of their vaccines. That's the contact has received all recommended vaccines. Of course, this varies by your age and what vaccine you receive. But if you're up to date, you've gotten all your recommended vaccines and boosters for your age group, then if you are exposed to COVID-19, you do not need to quarantine. However, you should wear a well-fitting mask for 10 days and then monitor for symptoms. If you are not up to date on your vaccines, then it's actually gonna look a lot like the isolation guidance. You're going to stay home for five days, avoid other people as much as possible, including in your household. And then you can leave the quarantine, but you need to wear that well-fitting mask for five days. And if at any point you have symptoms, you should jump over to that isolation protocol we just talked about. And in both of those cases, whether you're vaccinated or not, it's recommended to test on day five. So I think that's the end of the presentation portion, but we're going to address several questions that were submitted to us by the board. I think perhaps Dr. [inaudible].
Yeah, so let me just quickly frame this, which is, answers to COVID questions always must take into account that COVID continues to humble us, right? The science emerges. And finally, that we're physicians, healthcare providers, epidemiologists, not immunologists or virologists, will do our best to give you the answers as we know it. But again, science emerges. And our answers have to be balanced against other critical considerations like academic factors and others. So the first one, I think Patty Manning was gonna take, long-term effects on children who suffer from COVID and its related variants. Patty?
So the short answer to this question is, we really don't know yet, right? We have only now had two years of experience with COVID. We are seeing some children with what are referred to as symptoms of long COVID or long-haul COVID. Children with more chronic respiratory issues, fatigue, some subtle neurologic differences or cognitive processing issues. But these are still fairly scattered and not well-aggregated types of observations. And so I say to a lot of people, we're still learning what might be the long-term effects of COVID. I say this often in times, in contrast to questions around what are the long-term effects of the vaccine, we can say with a lot of confidence that vaccines of this nature have no known long-term effects. But COVID, we're still, COVID infection itself, we're still learning about.
Great. Thanks. The second question related to comparing the risk of serious illness and death from Omicron with that of Delta, and what about other particular threats like flu? And I'll start off, but welcome others. I think is Omicron more risky than Delta? And I'm gonna say no and yes, and both are true, right? So for the individual who gets a current infection in the Omicron environment, you are less likely to land in the hospital. If you're in the hospital, it looks like you're less likely to end up in an ICU. So at an individual level, the risk is reduced. But because it is so transmissible, we end up with many more cases. And as Andy showed in his curve, many more folks in the hospital. So these aren't the exact right numbers. But if Omicron is a 50% less risk of hospitalization, but it spreads 10 times as far, you can understand why the hospitals are filled. And then frankly, you can understand why hospital staff, like school staff, are struggling themselves with both infection and quarantine. In terms of comparison to other things like flu, I did find just a little bit of data about this. This is not data for Omicron. It's data averaged over the last year and a half. And so, for example, the risk of the worst possible outcome of death for a 75-year-old woman for flu, it's about 1 in 100, depends on the year and the type of flu. The risk of death for a 75-year-old woman who is unvaccinated in COVID is about 1 in 20. So 1 in 100 versus 1 in 20. If someone is vaccinated, if that woman is vaccinated, the risk is about 1 in 220. So very strong protection from vaccination for COVID in terms of protecting from death, and similar paths for hospitalization. And Andy, Patty, or Susan, anything to add in terms of the broader question about the risk of serious illness and death from Omicron compared to the past?
I think the only add I would have, and it's more of an underscore, is that the outcomes that we're seeing from Omicron and from COVID more generally are very different depending on vaccination status. That is, if you are vaccinated and boosted, your risk of severe outcome goes way down compared to if you are unvaccinated.
Great. All right, just quickly on number three, the role of natural immunity. You know, everything I read and others disagree with me if you must, but is that natural immunity is not conferring much protection against Omicron. And, you know, it's not the same thing, but just think you get a cold one year, you could still get a cold the next year. Natural immunity is not the answer for the current setting. I'll combine the last two, and again, I'll be brief and welcome brief comments from others. Are school buildings still considered safe place? You combine that with five, would it be better perhaps to close schools and businesses to help contain spread? And then an embedded question in there about masks. I mentioned earlier, KN95 masks are better protection than a surgical mask, which is better protection than a cloth mask. But the word "safe" just isn't so useful. I think we gotta talk about safer and less safe. And the answer is, it depends, right? So under ideal school conditions in which as many people as possible are fully up to date on their vaccines and distancing and ventilation, they can be a safe place. There's safer place. There is no evidence, however, that closing them in this environment is the right answer to help contain spread. When you think about being remote, there's also ideal remote conditions where kids and families are actually safe and healthy at home. But that's not typically what happens, right? Between sports and other clubs and other mixing in unmasked environments, going full remote hasn't been shown to be fully safe as well. So welcome other comments from my colleagues.
Hey, Rob, you know, I would just add about the mask question that we talk a lot in the hospital about the importance of a well-fitting mask. So there are different degrees of mask protection depending on the type of mask. But at the end of the day, the most important thing is that the mask that the person has fits well. So a KN95 not worn correctly, it may not be any better than a cloth mask that's worn more correctly. So attention to the fit is probably as important, if not more important, and more doable than getting everybody in a certain type of mask.
Great. Why don't we stop there? There are additional questions for us, or otherwise we'll let you proceed.
Do board members have questions for our medical expert? While folks are gathering those, I just want to say thank you very, very much for your time. I know that all of the questions I submitted, I see very clearly reflected there and feel like they've been addressed. I also want to see if other folks have other questions. If there aren't any, I would love to hear from those of you who do have school-aged children, where they go to school, and what those schools are choosing to do at the moment. That was for Dr. Kahn and team. If you all have kids, where do they go to school?
No, I'm sorry, mine have aged out. So Andy, it looks like you got it.
I'm happy to start. I have a fourth grader and a sixth grader. I live in the Sycamore District. And our district has remained essentially open since the start of the pandemic. We had some, about 30% of the student body was virtual last year. This year, there is no similar virtual option, and that we're all in buildings. And we've done quite well with it. This year, we have had a mask mandate in place for our lower grades since the start of the year. And as of today, actually, for the next two weeks at least, we now have that mask mandate bended toward our upper grades as well. I would say that being in school is a net positive that I think has served my kids quite well. And I think they have also been well-served by protections like having masking and distancing in place when possible to try and keep as many students and staff in the building as we possibly can.
I'll share that I have a senior daughter who is at Wyoming High School. And I think the experience was very similar to what Andy Beck shared. We have had a mask mandate in place since the beginning of the school year. We had virtual options last year, which about a third-ish of kids exercised. But this year, we've been all in person. And right before the holidays, the district was going to go mask optional in the upper grades. And locally, we had strong messaging within the community, and certainly Omicron played a role in that. And the district decided to go back to mandated masks. And to Andy's point, I think it's been a very effective strategy. I would also be remiss as not sharing that I'm a developmental pediatrician by training. And so just from that perspective, I can't emphasize enough how important in-school opportunities are for all children. Certainly, children with disabilities, I think, have paid a very unique price during this pandemic. So I'm so grateful for all the efforts that you all have. So I'm so grateful for all the efforts that you all have been undergoing to meet the needs of all children, including children with disabilities.
And I've worked with both Loveland and Cincinnati Country Day Schools. I've got a kiddo with both, at both, I've had kiddos at both. And Loveland has a mask mandate for K6, although it is getting supposed to expire at the beginning of this month or as with the beginning of this month. Cincinnati Country Day has had a mask mandate from the beginning. Both have done well. I had periodic closures in both places. But again, having the kids in the classroom is really the piece that has been really critical across the board.
Any other questions from board members? Mr. Marasky?
Thank you, President Lindy. And thank you to all y'all for coming here. It's good to see some familiar faces. Been a minute. Good to see y'all, and I appreciate you sharing your expertise as always. And with all due respect, the districts that we're talking about now in our district are very, very different. And I said this last week, and I've said it for the past two years. And I just want to make sure unless I'm missing something, is Omicron attacking the black population at a steadier pace as the old, the original COVID and the Delta COVID and all the other COVIDs? Is it, are we still seeing that attacking the black community more rapidly than it is the white community or not? Is it the same?
Andy, based on your data that you've seen, you in a position for that?
So I admittedly have limited data on demographic characteristics of patients in hospitals. So I cannot answer that part of the question directly. We are just starting to look at testing numbers across different populations and are seeing very similar infection curves based on the testing data for which we have race data available. That is similar upward trends that are essentially mirrored, no matter the demographic of the population. What I can't tell you, because I don't have the data on it, is how that is reflected in patients in hospitals.
Great. And I just have a comment. I appreciate that. I appreciate that you all called out that the first day was day zero. And this is probably more of a question for Ms. Bunty or Superintendent Ahmad. Were we honoring day zero or were we doing five days, like as opposed to six, for example?
So the first day of symptoms is day one, if you're symptomatic, or if you get tested, then that's that. And so we're following exactly what was presented.
Okay. And my very last question. So with Cleveland, so Cleveland went remote. We've been talking about potentially doing two weeks. It would seem to me that three weeks makes more sense for a number of reasons we can talk about when we get to that part of it. But Cleveland looks like they leveled out. In doing my own reading and talking to my own medical friends, it seems that we may be, and I'm looking to the doctors to help me out here because this is not my world. I'm just going off of people who I think are smarter than me, that we may be a little behind Cleveland. And Cleveland, I know their schools, they made a decision to go remote. It's leveled out and things aren't spreading. Does that seem accurate, i.e. Cincinnati is a few weeks behind Cleveland? Or I know you're saying that remote may not have any impact, I mean, it has more impact than me in school. You know, perhaps, but it seems that Cleveland cracked some kind of code and that their data looks very different than ours. Can, does anyone know why? Did going remote have anything to do with it, or is that just corollary?
Andy, well, I was just going to comment on, you know, it's important to look at Cleveland, but it's also important to recognize that Cleveland was much higher than we were as they were even starting to get hit by Omicron. So they were at a level that was stressing their region in ways that we haven't, and I hope we don't experience, frankly. So it's hard for me to say if they went remote because of Omicron or because their system, their entire healthcare system was under such stress. And I also think it's hard to say that going remote resulted in the decrease because I think that could be just the natural course of the curve that they're in and maybe what we experience as well, regardless of decisions to go remote. That's mostly my opinion, but it's based on lots of conversations about what's happening up north.
Yeah, and I would just, I would just add to that, that if you look at the, the, the shape of the curve, they went up a few weeks before, they were higher to begin with, but they also increased before we did, and now they're coming down. And so what we're anxiously awaiting to see is whether we will follow a similar pattern, just offset by a couple of weeks. And we don't know that yet, of course. We, that will come over the next couple of weeks. But it appears from the trajectory and the shape of the curve that we're about two to three weeks behind, both on the increase and then potentially on the decrease.
Appreciate it. Thank you all. Mr. Gray?
So I just had a couple of questions. One dealt with, you know, one of the issues that we're dealing with is staffing issue. And so in part, looking at some of the demographics that we did, I know you highlighted specifically that the 20 to 29-year-olds were, where we saw the largest kind of increase, and that's generally also where there was a lower vaccination rates. Is that true of some of the other demographics as well? Because I know our, you know, our staffing is of varying ages. And so it would be somewhat, you know, helpful to know, again, because our staffing is so highly vaccinated, whether or not there's a potential for the same growth patterns in the vaccinated other age groups.
So I would start by just saying that the shape of the increase and the rapid rise we're seeing across essentially every age group. The height of that increase, we're seeing the most apparent in the 20 to 29 and 30 to 39-year-old age groups. But the rate of rise is similar elsewhere, just not to the same extent. We also know that Omicron infection is possible even if you are vaccinated. And so it's certainly possible that staff who are vaccinated, this is happening, of course, at all of our healthcare systems as well, are getting infected. Now, fortunately, the vast majority of people who are vaccinated don't progress to a severe severity in need of hospitalization, but that doesn't mean that they're not getting infected.
And so in my second question really has to do with the ability to protect going forward. And so even if we were to have, for instance, a time for resets to allow folks to be able to take some necessary steps in their own daily lives to kind of limit their interactions that might precipitate getting COVID, is that something that would have a dramatic effect potentially on folks' ability to maintain staffing levels? So for instance, in a hospital, if there was an ability to have a reset period, would that provide any relief in staffing? Because I think that's the other question that we are left with is whether or not taking a break is simply in itself, it's enough? Or if there are other protocols that we should be looking at during that period of time to ensure that folks are less exposed to the virus, less exposed to places where they may catch the virus? Or asking folks to be taking that self-initiative to be less exposed to those opportunities?
Patty, do you want to try the one you've been, I know you've been thinking a lot about our healthcare staff?
It's, if I understand the question correctly around taking a reset or a break, will that help with staffing? I guess, yeah, somebody who's got a very close eye on our hospital staffing levels. I think the nature of the rate of rise that Andy has spoken to would not necessarily be impeded by a, by a break or a reset. I think it's just going to continue because I think Omicron is so contagious. So, you know, we hope and we counsel and guide people to be really careful in their out-of-work life, but there's only so much we can do there. And this is why I think, you know, having, going virtual in a school setting would not necessarily mitigate spread because I think all those individuals would just simply spread it somewhere else because it's so infectious. I think what worked a couple of years ago with a different variant is just not going to work today. That's not to say we should resign ourselves to all getting sick or getting Omicron. We should do our best. But I don't think the tools that we had in the past, whether that's going virtual or taking a break, are going to stop what seems inevitable. I think what we need to do is just try and figure out how we make it through these next few weeks, keeping as many people safe as possible and meeting the needs. For us, it's meeting the healthcare needs of the region. For you all, it's meeting the academic needs of a large population of children.
I'm just going to quickly chime in in that forward look, right? You've probably heard estimates, you know, February 1, February 15, the flattening that Andy showed in Cleveland. There is certainly suggestion of that, like you saw in South Africa, in London. I see people in Boston using, looking actually at wastewater and Omicron in the virus in the wastewater showing a peak and a dropping off. So in that, I think time is the reset, like how do we get through the next two to four weeks? And to Mike's point, could it be causal or could it be correlation? I think what will happen is time will go and we'll, Omicron will get through the circles it's going to get through. And we are all very hopeful by mid-February, we would absolutely hope to see a flattening of the curve.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for our medical advisors or volunteers or very helpful people? Okay. Well, thank you all very, very much. I'm going to defer to Ms. Bunty about what happens next.
All right. And thank you.
Thank you. So I echo President Lindy's remarks about thanking our folks from children. As many of you are aware, they are on weekly calls with us at 7:30 in the morning and review our data each and every week. So we are very incredibly grateful for them. So if we go to the next slide, please, it says vaccine clinics. So as you know, we've been roughly doing about two vaccine clinics a month for the last several months. We had one last week. We have another one this week. And then we have additional dates scheduled in February. So please note that these include initial shots for our students five and up, second dose shots for anyone five and up, and also boosters for 12 and over. You may note that CDC has changed its definition of fully vaccinated to those folks who've had the series of vaccines, either Pfizer and Moderna within the last five months, a J&amp;J shot within the last two months, or who have received a booster. We are very excited to begin to offer to our staff COVID-19 tests at four different locations. Last week, we provided 178 of those tests, and we will continue doing that as long as we are able to do so. On the next slide. So we recognize that with or without COVID, we are, like so many other organizations, in a staff shortage. This is occurring nationally. It's hard to walk into any business without seeing a help wanted sign, and we are in the same situation. So we have 289 vacant positions, 150 are which pair of professionals. The other vacancies are comprised of folks in our dining services arena and our custodial rank, security, and some are teachers. So what are we doing to make sure that we are filling these vacancies? You can see a list of items up there, including pipelines. We've talked about our parent-to-teacher pipeline previously. We also have student teachers who've moved into teaching positions along with support from their universities and lead teachers. And we are actively recruiting some of our retirees. Let's take a look at what that staffing looks like, though, actually in our schools right now. So on the next slide, you can see our certificated absences. And these certificated are folks who hold licenses from the state. So they include teachers, psychologists, social workers, principals. And then our civil service are those who do not have licenses in that way. Please note our total staff hotline calls were 1,852 last week. And our nurses, we continue to have those 23 nurses absent. Our nurses within the Cincinnati Public Schools are supplied to us through a contract and partnership with our Cincinnati Health Department. So nationally, there is a nurse shortage. And as was referenced earlier, the Ohio National Guard is actually assisting at hospitals. We here in our district use temporary agencies to fulfill that need. We have for several years for our students with disabilities who often have one-to-one nursing support. At this time, CHD is also using temp agencies, which include Western and True Staff. On the next slide, please. So we do our very best to fill any vacancies that a teacher may have from being ill with our substitutes. We have various types of substitutes, including super subs, which are subs, at least one, who is at every single school and in some buildings up to seven. We are using ESSR dollars to pay for these. And there are subs who start every single day at the same school. So there may be six super subs at West High School. They report there every single day to cover absences, and they receive benefits for doing so. We also have our daily subs. Some people have asked, well, if you have substitutes, why are they not being filled? And many of our substitutes are retirees and/or people who wish not to be in buildings during this high rate of COVID infection. On the next slide, please. We've also heard a lot from folks in our community, "I want to help," and, boy, do we need you. So here are the requirements to be a substitute teacher. Please note there are two requirements. One is a degree. Now, ODE, the Ohio Department of Education, due to the increased need for subs across our state, has changed the requirement. So instead of having to have a bachelor's degree, you need an associate's degree now or 48 semester credit hours. You also need to have that ODE substitute teaching license. You can see how to apply for your substitute teaching license, and this has caused confusion with some folks. Please note, it's a two-step process. So first, you have to apply to the CPS website in our AppleTrack program. And then you apply to the Ohio Department of Education for your substitute teaching license. If you apply to ODE and we don't have your application in AppleTrack, we don't know that you're out there. So we have to have both pieces in order to be able to pull you in. You can see the pay rate, so $134 a day for those daily folks, that every morning you go into our system and you select where you would like to sub that day. $168 a day for those folks who report to the same building and become part of those staff. And then long-term subs, finally known as LTSs, have variable pay. On the next slide, you can see, as we talked about, that subs can log in. We've already talked about super subs. They are benefit-eligible. Long-term subs are also receive benefits. You can also see how you apply for licensing and the information that you need to have in order to do so. Finally, CPS is covering the cost of all background checks. Those background checks can be completed here at our own ed center and our employee care center, which is immediately past the guard station. So how are we doing in terms of student attendance? You can see that we are roughly in the 70s, 70s for student attendance. Our students in quarantine continue to rise in terms of numbers. And actually, we had the highest student quarantine rate that we have in the last two years on Thursday. So now we're going to spend some time talking about on the next slide, how we move into thinking about shifting to remote learning school by school. So several folks have asked, what are the metrics for these decisions? We begin at looking at that 85% threshold, and we use that as a starting point. Please note that that is just a guide for us. It is not our sole decision-making data point. If it were, we would have had 48 schools switch to remote learning last week. So it is simply a beginning point. On the next slide, we will detail for you what actually goes into that decision. I would like to start first with the note. So again, there is no automatic percent or threshold because our schools are so unique in terms of their programmatic focus. Montessori schools, for example, are staffed very differently than perhaps a PIDEA school. We also have the type of staff who is absent. So a psychologist being absent may look a little bit different than the fourth-grade teacher. And then the third is how can that school creatively fill in with subs and be able to consolidate classes? So our very first step in this school-by-school shift is to take a look at filling those vacancies with any school staff and/or subs. We then do additional gaps in terms of coverage with. We then do additional gaps in terms of coverage with central office staff. We're sending approximately 47 people out from central office per day across the city to different buildings to be able to support. That next step is that there are still coverage situations where we need to have an adult in a classroom. We start to begin to consolidate classrooms. So we move students into gyms. We move students into cafeterias. Schools where we have had to provide this level of support are put on a 24-hour watch list. We are actively engaged in calling those principals, making sure that we are monitoring what their staff attendance looks like. And then that next day, if that staffing has stayed the same or worsened, we make that shift to remote learning. Next slide, please. So how are we filling these gaps? Our teachers are covering other classrooms during their planning bells and lunches. We are pulling people who are non-load-bearing to provide support, which is impacting our academic and SEL initiatives, but it's needed. So our reading and math specialists, our school social workers, our security staff, and others in the building are being used to cover classrooms. From outside the community, we have 62 bus drivers who, during the lunchtime, because they're not driving as many field trips, are coming into our schools, and they are being paid to fill in for pairs and security. This is actually a retention strategy for our bus drivers, quite honestly, and it helps us in the schools. We are also using temporary employees through a temp agency, as safety monitors in our building through CBTS. We have parents in many of our schools supporting recess and lunch under the guidance of a CPS employee. And as I previously mentioned, we have approximately 47 folks here from the Ed Center and Iowa Street locations supporting our buildings. Next slide, please. So last week, we had several schools that moved to remote learning. AWL and LEAP are scheduled to return tomorrow. In conversations with those principals, they still have staff absences. We will be providing coverage to be able to support them tomorrow. Please note that they missed one instructional day, AWL and LEAP, because of the cold weather day and the professional development day. Next slide, please. So as schools prepare to shift for remote learning, Dr. Terpo and I call each school along with the director of school leadership who supports that school, and we work through a checklist. This is just a small portion of that list. We also work with transportation, dining services, IT talent, and our student services leaders to make sure that we have shifted all of the supports that we need to so that we can have a continuity of instruction provided. At this time, Assistant Superintendent Murphy will share information about the survey.
Thank you, Susan. So you all will recall, last week, we were asked to survey our students, our faculty and staff, as well as our families, our parents, and our guardians. So on the next slide, you should be able to see the results of that survey. For the parents or the parents or guardians, we did work with POSIP. That is the group that we normally work with when we're looking at family surveys. And you'll see on the chart that we had just a little less than 10,000 respondents, which is pretty much on par with what we have been getting through our POSIP survey data. 53% of the respondents are very much interested in a district-wide remote learning plan, and 47% are interested in a school-by-school plan. As usual, we broke that down by title and non-title schools, and you can see the numbers and the percentages across the board for title and non-title in terms of the total number of respondents, as well as the number of respondents who are interested in the district-wide plan and the number of respondents who are interested in a school-by-school plan. Our students and our faculty and staff, we did an internal survey for them. And so our student, you see the number, this is for grades nine through 12, 1,250 respondents, and you'll see 55% are interested in a district-wide plan. Of 45% of those students who responded are interested in school-by-school. And then finally, our faculty and staff, 3,100 respondents. 70% of those respondents, we do want to note, are certificated staff. 68% wanting district-wide and 32% wanting a school-by-school plan. On the next slide, earlier you had a word or two from not only Susan but also Dr. Moffett. Yes. So we have a lot of people who want to help out our schools. Ms. Bolton mentioned earlier our partners, but at this point, we're putting out a larger cry for our parents. Some are already in place. They know how to go to their schools. They know how to get involved, and they know how to be engaged. But we want to heighten that awareness, and so we're launching a campaign immediately. So on the next slide, you'll see for the parents and community volunteers how you can get involved and engage in supporting our schools at this time. The process has always been in place, but the awareness may not have been as visible. So here we go. So if you are a parent, a caregiver, a guardian, a community member, you will need that FBI, BCI background check. However, or in addition, Cincinnati Public Schools will take care of the cost for that background check. And then you will need also a volunteer badge to be in any of our schoolhouses. Next slide, please. So the steps for how you begin this process is, there is a registration form that we're going to make public on our website. You would complete that, complete the background check. You will submit for the badge authorization. And then there is a scheduling where our security office here at the Education Center will create that badge for you. And then after that, my team will work to facilitate getting your name and contact information to the school that you're interested in supporting. Next slide, please. So this is a listing, of course, of how you currently obtain a background check. You can come here to the Education Center to get that background check. Once again, the superintendent, the treasurer have agreed to pick up the cost for that background check. There are specific hours you'll want to pay attention to in order to do the background check. You also can go to the Hamilton County Justice Center to complete that check. Next slide, please. The volunteer badge. You would come here, again, to the Education Center. There is an appointment scheduling process that you'll want to pay attention to in order to provide you with the best times for those services. The next slide, please. And at this time, we'll have our superintendent talk about our current landscape. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Next slide, please. I would like to open up by thanking all of our staff for going the extra mile. I am so proud of our staff, to their dedication to our students and families, to ensure that our classrooms were covered, that we were able to serve meals, that we were able to monitor arrival, dismissal, lunch, and recess. This could have not been done this past week without you. We know our students learn better in the classroom with our teachers, so shifting to remote learning is a choice of last resort. Next slide, please. I would like to start by sharing our current landscape in our community. Our city has declared a state of emergency due to staffing challenges around the fire department. Our National Guard are supporting hospitals. UC and NKU has went to extended remote learning for students. And just published at 3:21 PM today, several schools have shifted to remote learning. Lachlan to January 12th, Mount Halsey extended to January 24th, New Richmond, January 18th, Winton Woods, January 24th, Coventant, January 18th, Newport, January 18th, and Dayton, Kentucky, January 19th. Next slide, please. So we are all facing these challenges, especially with staffing. I want to ensure you that our districts are plugged in and networking with others. I meet monthly with the Council of Great City Schools, and it's specifically with superintendents of urban districts. I meet weekly with Hamilton County ESC, with superintendents in Hamilton County. And just on Friday, I had a federal meeting with the Secretary of Education, Pardona. So we are plugging in, sharing ideas, and networking. Next slide, please. Our current landscape for CPS. And I would just like to remind our public that in November 2020, we shifted to remote with 780 school-based employees absent. As of Thursday, CPS had 786 school-based employees absent, which left us with eight schools currently going remote, two on Wednesday, six on Thursday, and we currently have eight on the watch list. Many subs will not come into the classroom, so our fill rate for January was 46%. Pre-COVID, it was up to 80%. So we see a drastic change. Our central office, we're helping where possible, but it is affecting, having a negative impact on our district essential operations. Next slide, please. Ms. Bunty shared this information as far as our 85% staff attendance threshold. So without a school-by-school process, 48 schools would have been in remote learning. With the school-by-school process, all hands on deck, schools were supported with uncertified staff. We were combining classrooms, but we were able to keep 16 schools in remote learning. So what are our options? Next slide, please. Option one, to continue with school-by-school closure. Classrooms are being covered with reading specialists, school social workers, non-certified school staff, central office, Iowa Street, inconsistent coverages. Parents notified the afternoon prior to the closure, the impact of district operations, and combining classrooms into larger spaces. Option two, which is administration's recommendation. We believe that option two, to a temporary district-wide remote learning model, we believe this is a stronger academic model. This would increase certificated staff with students. We believe that more subs would sign up to cover classrooms. We believe that we may have fewer sick call-ins for those with mild symptoms. And we also believe that this will allow community health data to improve. Thank you for the consideration, and we are now available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, interim Superintendent Lamott, and Ms. Bunty, and Ms. Murphy. I think what makes the most sense is to do this in a couple of different steps. I think before we make any kind of decision tonight, one way or the other, I'd like to do the hearing of the public so that we get to hear from people who would also like to weigh in. I also think we've just heard a lot of really important information, and board members may have questions right now. So we could go either way. I think if people have maybe one or two questions that feel important to ask now, I'd like to create a moment for that. And then just note that whatever we don't get to now, we will have a chance to talk more, ask questions, share perspective before any decision-making, after we've also heard from the public. So are there any board members who'd like to ask one or two questions now or will share a comment? Mr. Craig?
I just had a logistics question with regard to subs, because we had this process there, and the ODE has allowed a little bit of leeway with regard to the temporary licenses. What's kind of the timeframe to having a sub, a new sub go through the full process? Just so we kind of better understand also, because, I mean, you know, what I think you principled out as a benefit is that you have more time to have subs in the building going
So thank you for that question. Right now, it takes about two to three weeks. Part of that is the actual background check through, required by ODE.
Vice President Johnson?
Yes, I'm thinking about all the facts and information that has been given tonight. And my question is just regarding our ability to reinforce our protocols and some of our mitigating strategies. That being, given that we're so low on nurses, and nurses were based in the building. So if kids got sick, they could go to the nurse. If they had a fever, they could go home. And I've heard through the rumor mill, and it's just a rumor mill, I don't have any facts to back it up, that some kids are coming to school with symptoms. And, you know, what can we do besides keeping them in classrooms if they're showing symptoms? I mean, we still have to try our best to control what's happening in the schools. And some of this will help me think through, you know, what's in the best interest of the schools, you know, and the students.
No, sure. It's a really good question. So our teachers and school teams have become really adept at recognizing COVID symptoms. When they see students displaying those symptoms, they're either referred to the nurse's office for schools who have nurses, or to the main office when the nurse is not present. Schools are covered by nursing supervisors, and then they're also buddied up. So when parents are picking up their, or caregivers are picking up their children, they can go to that buddied-up site to get their child.
In terms of, I'm sorry, in terms of numbers, what, we're down 23 nurses? How many totally did we have?
I believe it's 68.
We have 68, so we're down 23. And what's happening for the schools that don't have nurses?
So right now, every school that doesn't have one is paired with another nurse. So for example, Mount Washington, in close proximity, so Mount Washington and Sands, the nurses at one site for two days a week and the other site for three days a week, and then covers both of those sites. We also have nursing supervisors who are providing support.
Thank you.
Other questions for now, and just to, Ms. Weinberg and then to Dr. Moffett, and just, we will also, in addition to this, have a chance after we hear from the public.
Just following back up on the superintendent's recommendation stating that the dates of 1/12 through 1/24, what would be the parameters of returning to in-person?
It would be very similar, looking at our data, looking at our staffing, monitoring our COVID hotline, and looking at the ability to cover. So we have something in place right now where they call the hotline. We look at 85% coverage rate, and then we will continue to communicate. We send to the board a daily memo. We will send that daily memo to you before that date, and then make decisions from there.
I just have a question. Mary, were you done? I'm sorry.
Yes.
About how many subs do we have in the, or at least applications in the pipeline so that upon return, if we were to go remote, based on your recommendation, we would be looking at, what number would we be looking at as far as subs that could potentially be in our buildings if we worked to meet this again? And then I have another question with regard to quarantine, and I appreciated the Sorenson Hospital report on the difference between quarantine and isolation. If a staff member is on quarantine, are they able to work during remote?
So to answer your question, I'll have to get that in. So to answer your question, I'll have to get that information for you. I don't know how many folks are actually in our AppleTrack system right now. When folks are currently, um, under our guidelines right now, if a teacher or a staff member is remote and, um, they're using sick leave, they cannot work.
Okay. Uh, I think what I'll do then is we'll, we'll move now to the part of our agenda of our hearing of the public, uh, knowing that we'll also have a chance to, to chat again in a bit. Uh, each speaker will have two minutes, and we'll direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation in the district, your school community, your topic and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any questions you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, we also reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that all public commentary be respectful of all listeners. Thank you very much. Uh, can, uh, the administration share how many speakers we have this evening?
There are 16 speakers this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I also want to just share a hope for this year, which is that we can create ways to hear from students, uh, maybe not tonight, maybe tonight, but as we go forward, I'm hoping that student voice can be a regular part of our meeting. We can start whenever you're ready.
Our first speaker this evening is Monique Bush, followed by Owen Durico, followed by Sharon. Go ahead, Ms. Bush.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, actually it's Mildred Bush, so I'm the sister of Monique Bush, but it'll be Mildred Bush speaking. Um, I, I, um, am a parent of a student at Schroeder High School, and I'm also a staff member of Woodford Academy. I am a, I'm a building sub.
We're able to turn on a video? Uh, if you're able to turn on a video, we can't see you yet.
Okay, did you want me to turn the video on? Y'all want to see my beautiful face? Okay, what is, how you turn it on, Monique? Okay, I can't, I'm not able to turn, I can't, my camera won't come, cut on, let me see.
Thank you for trying, please continue.
Okay, so real quick, um, my, um, my, my, on the half of subs. I, I think that if we, we could utilize our, our sub pool better, um, I think if you put us in a better pool where we could work every day, some subs want to work every day. I know a couple of other subs who would like to work every day, but sometimes you can't see the schools that are open. Sometimes you, um, are not able to schedule yourself. I think if they gave us more, more of a, a ability to schedule ourselves, since there's such a need in the different pools, instead of having necessarily assigned people assigned to those, um, schools, if you go, would guarantee us to work every day, some subs would be willing to go to other schools to work. I liked working in the different varieties. I were actually, uh, worked at 29 different schools before and enjoyed doing that, uh, when I was able to schedule myself and went to work every day. Um, so because we have such a need, and I also work in the healthcare field as a second job, so because we have such a need in both of those fields, if you had it opened up more, we, we, that would be a great way of, of helping you out, um, with staffing. Also, I think you'd need to also be, to be concerned about bringing so many people in the building. So you're talking about bringing in volunteers and all these different people with Omicron and all that being able to spread so wildly, you want to be kind of conscientious of how many people you have in the building and how many people you have as far as hands-on deck. Um, so maybe I, I do like that, um, the superintendent said something about shutting down, that, that might be a better route to go.
Thanks this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Our next speaker is Owen Durico, followed by Sharon Silver, followed by Carrie Kinkle. Go ahead, Mr. Durico.
Uh, hello, board. Uh, as you know, I'm Owen Durico. I'm speaking as the Vice President of the Young Activists Coalition tonight. Um, first of all, allow me to voice the obvious hypocrisy evident to anybody watching, uh, which is completely unavoidable regardless of any excuses. The board is now discussing whether or not students and staff should return to school while you have remained fully socially distanced and without in-person public attendance for these meetings since the beginning of this pandemic. And while this matter of conducting meetings is certainly more accessible, if you have expected teachers to handle concurrent learning, learning on their own, surely the district is able with its numerous resources to handle the same thing that you have expected of them. Fundamentally, anybody which is refusing to adopt for itself the same policies that it forces upon those it is supposed to protect has no grounds to stand on in suggesting the safety and effectiveness of those policies, not to mention the fact that you undermine your own credibility when it appears to everyone that you do not have faith that the policies you claim are sufficient to protect students are sufficient to protect yourselves. Furthermore, allow me to condemn the inaction of the board last week in the face of not just a clearly indicated public health crisis, but also a logistical disaster in the day-to-day operation of schools, which is evident to anybody who has been in those schools. This board has already severely undermined its credibility and public faith in your ability to act. If you are the candidates of action in student advocacy and creative solutions that you claim to be, now is the time you get to prove it. The survey results you collected speak for themselves. Will you take the steps necessary to protect students, teachers and staff, or will you prove that, like prior boards, you don't have what it takes? The choice is yours. And remember, any action you take cannot begin and end with this district's most affluent and populous schools. Community schools cannot be allowed to become a casualty as they do so often with other district policy. Likewise, immunocompromised and disabled students are not a footnote. Prove to us that you can do it.
Thanks this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Silver, followed by Carrie Kinkle, followed by Ruth DeBono. Go ahead, Ms. Silver.
Thank you. Apologies, my camera is not working. Thank you for bringing in the people from Children's Hospital. That was great information. I would add that the American Medical Association and the American Nurses Association have come out against the new, um, reduced isolation guidance. They do not consider it safe. There are some estimates that as many as 31% of people can still transmit, uh, COVID, via, the SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID-19 at day six. So that's one problem. As far as long-term effects of COVID, there's a new paper last week saying that people under 18 who have had COVID appear to be twice as likely as people who have not had COVID to, um, get diabetes. Like in the short term, they're testing, uh, that they're diabetic. So there's a long-term consequence for, you know, that's been seen in children. Um, that is probably Delta data, not Omicron. The jury's still out on that. All, almost all the day, data on safety in schools was from Delta. Omicron, as you've heard, is much more transmissible. Uh, cloth masks, even if they fit well, are not as good. I would suggest that you take this three-week pause, or however long it is, and focus on getting as many people who are eligible boosted. There need to be more clinics than what we heard about the number of clinics planned. I would use the time, I would go to remote learning, use that time to get everybody boosted, get tests if you possibly can. Testing is still a critical part if we want to protect people coming out of isolation and, um, work on getting a decent supply of masks. Those can be pricey, the better masks, the N95s, maybe set up some sort of, uh, way to let people know it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carrie Kinkle, followed by Ruth DeBono, followed by Kim Tobin. Go ahead, Ms. Kinkle.
Hi, um, I just wanted to start, um, by saying that I really appreciate the collaborative effort that seems to have come upon us, because I was, um, kind of pissed last week that, um, it felt like, uh, the can was kicked, like, you know, the ball was dropped. And it, in listening tonight, I really, um, appreciate that, even, even when, um, interim superintendent was explaining that, you know, there was a collaborative effort involved and the people who were at the table. So I do want to start with positive. I do, though, believe that, um, or I would like to see, um, the consideration for a remote option, because you all this evening have said in your, um, presentations and, and had the culpability of the staffing shortage and how that is grossly ineffective, because students have not had, um, the instruction that they need, um, considering off the heels of what happened last year and the loss of learning there. Um, also, one of the things that I did notice, um, one of the women who spoke, the doctor who was speaking, when she was asked about, you know, her own children, whether part of the Sycamore District, and of course, that is only 5,600 students whereby we serve, you know, over 35,000, master the obvious, but I feel like that's important to be in consideration of these things. And I also appreciate that you were looking at, you know, those are surrounding schools, Covington, Mount Healthy and so forth. Um, that said, I just wanted, my son wanted to say something, which, um, because you actually had said you wanted some student input, but this is something that he asked to say, so I'm just going to put him on for my last 30 seconds or whatever I have. So thank you for your efforts, um, and I, I hope that you, um, consider what is best for our students and staff.
Yeah. Hi, I'm a student at Walnut Hills, and, um, as my mom was saying, I think it would be better that we go remote for a few weeks, or at least until the staffing issue is resolved. Um, because I've had a teacher out, my friends have had a few teachers out, and we've just been sent to the gym with no instruction, just for a study hall. So I would say please consider that in, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruth DeBono, followed by Kim Tobin, followed by Andrea Cruz. Go ahead, Ms. DeBono.
Hey, um, my name is, um, presentation's from the Doctors at Children's Hospital, and I would, I think we can all agree that, you know, for everybody being virtual, virtual learning, be remote is not ideal. However, it seems right now that that might be the best option. Um, I first, I want to say that um, schools are not necess you know, lunch, there's no social distancing, no one's wearing masks, people are very crammed and close together. There's not necessarily enforcement of rules about wearing masks and of that sort of thing. And so it's important to, you know, as much as we might, as much as following the rules is something important, and so that's not something that, that's something that I think is being overlooked, um, in terms of spread within schools. Additionally, um, as Owen said earlier, disabled and immunocompromised this cannot be a and from the survey, it's clear that most people would prefer, but prefer a district write-down than individual schools. I can say from my own experience, because our school had to shut down, like, by the school-by-school basis, and it was really stressful not, you know, being in the middle of the day, not knowing, am I going to go to school tomorrow, what's going to happen? And then still, like, I, not knowing whether you're or not, it's much easier if we could just be told and then a date rather than, you know, a day-by-day thing where we don't know if we're going to be coming back to school the next day. Um, encourage you to listen, you know, listen to the students and the parents, especially that survey that you got, and you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Tobin, followed by Andrea Cruz, followed by, uh, Ms. Larson. Go ahead, Ms. Tobin.
Hi, my name is Kim Tobin. Um, I am a teacher at Dater High School. I also have two children in the district. My daughter is also at Dater High School, and my son is at Gamble, um, Elementary. Um, I and my son have been out, um, since Tuesday. We made it back in Monday and have been home since. Um, both of us tested positive for COVID Monday afternoon. Uh, we are fully vaxxed, I am boosted, we wear masks everywhere we go. This variant is not a joke. I've protected my family for the greater part of almost two years from getting it. I've been diligent in that fight, and still I'm here before you, I've never felt this sick in my life. Um, during this time, for the first week of quarter two, a sub was covering my classes, and not a sub that's like a certified teacher, but whoever, whatever warm body we could throw in there is who covered my classes. Though my students, my juniors and seniors who need English to, to graduate, spent the first week of the quarter with no instruction. Had we been remote, they would have had instruction that entire time from a certified teacher who's qualified to teach them. It is absolutely ridiculous that we're even having this conversation two years into this pandemic, but please do the right thing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrea Cruz, followed by Ms. Larson, Margaret Nelson. Go ahead, Ms. Cruz.
Hi, I'm a teacher at Vine, a preschool. And I wanted to make sure that when making decisions, you keep in mind that preschool students are unable to be vaccinated as they are ages three through five, and that many of your staff members also have young children. Um, as I was listening to the medical professionals, I was terrified, not for myself, as I am vaccinated, boosted and mature enough to keep my mask on correctly. Though when I was listening to the medical professionals, I was scared for all of my kids, my students and my son. I'm worried about them ending up in the hospital, but I'm also more so, sorry, I'm more so worried about them, um, their long-term effects that COVID could have on their developing brains and bodies. As you can imagine, many preschool students have difficulty with keeping their mask on over their noses due to sizing. They also have their masks off more often than other children throughout the district as they can, um, as they eat three meals and nap in the classrooms. Um, they also need assistance with things like wiping their nose and covering sneezes. Last year, class sizes were reduced, but this year they are not, so that makes it more difficult to space them out. I would like to recommend that the district purchase high-quality KN95 masks for preschoolers that, um, fit their faces in a snug manner. Um, it would also be very beneficial to put air purifiers with HEPA filters in every preschool classroom. Additionally, I heard the board to ask for creative solutions last week, though I've been trying to think of some, and I came up with the possibility of making preschool a half-day program for the time being and having them, um, not do their nap at school and maybe like taking their lunch with them. Um, I think that would provide the least restrictive and safest environment for preschoolers, um, for in-person instruction. And then when comparing our district and our data to other schools nearby, I think it's important to look at
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. Our next speaker is Naomi Larson, followed by Margaret Nelson, followed by Holly Miller. Go ahead, Ms. Larson.
Hi, um, I'm Naomi Larson. I am a parent of two students at Parker Woods Montessori and also a teacher, um, a first grade teacher at Rockdale, and I am also home right now. My daughter, we do not go anywhere. We actually tested throughout the holidays with Rapids. We were blessed to get Rapids, um, and don't go out to eat now for, I guess, a ye, years. But, um, she contract, con, um, became positive from being at school. Um, she wears her mask appropriately, however, she's seven, and I work with seven and six-year-olds. And even if they try, they're seven and six. And, um, based on the numbers that we saw from Children's Hospital, I understand a lot of those people were from suburban schools, so they might have had a different idea of what is the best idea right now. However, we are from an urban school, a, a city school, where we know that there's a lot more spread going on, and the numbers of what's going on in Children's Hospital and in our schools is not showing that we should still be in school right now. If we don't make a firm decision, we're creating more stress for our students and their families. My daughter keeps asking and texting me, because she's not even living here right now, since she was negative at my, which now I live in this mask in my own home, um, because she's like, did they make a decision yet? Am I going to school tomorrow? Do you know? She's asleep now. So she went to bed not knowing if she's going to school tomorrow. So talking about mental health, we're not protecting mental health. Also, if we close school by school, parents aren't able to prepare for childcare or their jobs. So we need to take a break, as Ms. Jones said last week, and, or the week before, whatever, last meeting, and make a firm decision to build trust back, to protect staff, protect students and to save instruction. We are taught to have a growth mindset, so if we could think about this as we are not ready to be in-person yet, we can take this time to save instruction by allowing teachers who are educated and ready to teach.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Margaret Nelson, followed by Holly Miller. Go ahead, Ms. Nelson.
Hi. Um, if we're going to remain in-person despite data on the long-term effects of COVID Um, if we're going to remain in person despite data on the long-term effects of COVID on children, including increased risk of diabetes, and there are some, uh, simple common sense mitigation strategies that the public health, health experts are recommending. One, provide students and staff with high-quality, well-fitted masks, which we know provide, K-95s provide better protection than the cloth and surgical masks currently being distributed. Second, provide HEPA filters for all classrooms and nurses' offices. Um, third, require all eligible students to be fully vaccinated and boosted or tested weekly. We need to do better protecting students, especially the most vulnerable in our community. This includes our preschool students who are unvaccinated and are unmasked in the classroom for an hour and a half naptime and three meals each day. Um, and I should mention, I am a preschool teacher and also the parent of a kindergartner in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Holly Miller, followed by CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Miller.
Sorry. So I am another person who didn't expect to ever be masked in their own home, but here I am. So my son wears an N-95 every day to Dater Montessori, a brand-new one, as a matter of fact, at a huge economic expense to me, an expense that most of our families don't have the luxury of in this district. I attended a training on bias and what that looks like today as a staff person in this district, and I am privileged, my son was privileged, yet he tested COVID-positive after being in a CPS school building for four days last week. I would encourage this board to make the right decision. I don't know what the long-term effects will be for him, but I don't want him to experience them, and I certainly don't want other children. In addition to that, I am here to speak on behalf of the medically fragile children, the ones that I serve and lay down my life for in this district daily. I am set up, I'm ready to go to hours and hours of creative problem-solving in my home space. I'm ready. However, these children cannot be masked, and currently, we've had staff members working in MD units who are turned away at CPS testing sites for having a close contact. I would urge this board to change that policy. If you work in a classroom with unmasked students, you should have access to testing symptom or not. This virus presents itself asymptomatic. My son has no symptoms, none at all. I've had three negative tests by the grace of God, but I'm sleeping in an N-95. So when we talk about comparing stats of Wyoming, Loveland, and districts like those, know that our families cannot afford to invest seventy dollars on
Very much. Thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you. Our last speaker is CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Good evening, and, um, have, um, I just want to say to everyone that I do have a lot to say this evening, and I hope that you will be patient with me. Um, if the people who want to keep the school buildings open understood with what was actually happening in school buildings across our district, um, I hope that your view will shift when you make a decision this evening, and shift to a remote learning for a short period of time as recommended by the administration. We are different in Sycamore, and Wyoming, and Country Day. Teachers are sick, kids are sick, nurses are sick, custodial staff is sick, security is sick, administrators are sick. This is not sustainable. Schools are understaffed, which is creating an unsafe operations for our schools. How would you feel as a principal, every day, not knowing if you are going to have enough staff tomorrow to properly staff your school safely? Fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, a hundred students are being told to sit in cafeterias or auditoriums or gyms while being watched by one or two security adults. Adults, sometimes they are teachers, holding thirty-five-plus kids in a room during their planning bell because there isn't enough staff. There is little social distancing going on in many buildings. Studing, students are getting positive test results back while they are present in school and not always able to isolate or quarantine. Why are they in school in the first place? And I'm not sure about that, because protocols are not being followed. Teachers are having to attempt to teach while allowing an additional fifteen-plus students into their class sometimes, because there isn't enough staff in their building. Many employees are testing positive, even though they have been vaccinated and boosted. Breakthrough cases are prevalent. Students are becoming frustrated with not having work to do for some classes, because teachers are not allowed to work remotely if they are positive and quarantining. If they were doing this, if we were doing remote, many of those teachers would be able to be teaching their students. But I ask, is this safe? Is this what we mean by education? If the board would have supported remote learning, more students would have had higher-quality instruction than what they received last week, unless would have become positive with COVID. Health and safety? COVID protocols are not in place across the district. There has not been sanitation of rooms where people have tested positive. Sanitizing wipes, hand gels, and sprays are not being distributed. Adults and students don't have high-quality masks. What does that mean when we say that there is a shortage of nurses? Because that seemed to not be understood last week. Nurses are now having to be assigned to multiple location. No one is really monitoring all students and staff to do the contact tracing and tracking at both schools. There's not enough areas for isolating students at either school. Student testing with Children's Hospital, which is done by the Health Department nurses, is not happening across all schools. Students are not being tested as necessary. Student numbers are not being reported for the district dash, dashboard. For example, one school had less than fifty kids by Thursday afternoon who were not sick, with many staff also sick. The dashboard showed zero students and two staff members were out all last week for four days. A large number of high school student, a large high school had about twenty-four to thirty-seven teachers out per day and hundreds of kids. The dashboard listed four students, six staff out for the entire week. I believe that coverage is not sustainable. Last week was difficult, and it will lead to employee burnout. Background checks actually take four to six weeks to get approval, so volunteers and subs will be limited. The district hotline, as you saw, there was close to two thousand calls. Employees have been told to call the hotline with questions, but even the hotline is not fully staffed. Employees can't get a call answered or a call back. We're using the five-day return as standard protocol without recommended mandates. The CDC guidelines for educational settings are more stringent than for the general public. As you know, Omicron is spreading rapidly across the country, and though our, and throughout our community, even infecting those who are vaccinated and boosted. However, when CPS requires a teacher to quarantine because they were exposed to someone infected, CPS also requires a teacher to use their own sick leave, and that should not be the case. Sick leave is bargained for benefit, and it's to be used when a teacher is sick. Sometimes these teachers aren't sick, but they're being quarantined. CFT has had several members who have been forced to use sick leave to quarantine, even though they were not sick. Some even tested negative and have nonetheless been required to use sick leave. A teacher is not permitted to use sick leave unless they are sick, and CPS cannot force a teacher to use sick leave unless a teacher is sick. A teacher certainly cannot be asked to use the sick leave for no other reason than because CPS administrative policies track the CDC guidelines. We ask that the board restore to teachers all the sick leave used to quarantine, and we ask that going forward, the board put teachers on paid administrative leave if required to quarantine based on their protocols, because we have teachers who are going into unpaid status, and there were actually teachers who were quarantined prior to Christmas break and did not get paid their holidays, because they were not in paid status prior to the, um, the, the holidays. So there are many things going on. When you make your decision, you vote tonight, make sure you know what you are voting on. Make sure you have enough information to have an opinion on what you are voting on, because last week, it really did frustrate me, and I was angrier than I've ever been at a school board meeting. So thank you very much. If you have any questions, you can contact me.
Okay, is that our last speaker? Okay, so, um, thank you very much, everybody who signed up and waited to speak. Uh, we're going to have our board discussion here in the way, um, I'm inclined to set this up, I'm hoping that other suggestions too, is give everybody a chance to share any statements they'd like to make or ask any questions of the administration. What I'm going to do is I'm going to keep track, and I want to make sure everybody has a chance to share. Uh, as you hear then what other people say, if this board meeting is like passport meetings, that may make you think of something else you'd like to share. I think that's okay, but I'm going to try to limit this to two rounds, so everybody gets a chance to share and ask a question. Once everybody's gone, you get another chance if someone said something you want to respond to. But once that's done, my proposal would be that we take a vote on, on the recommendation that's come from the interim superintendent. That way, everybody gets a chance to share, ask questions, respond to one another, but we also move this forward. Uh, and, and I don't want it to be rushed, but I also think it could go forever, uh, and I want us to move forward in the thought of the night. Any, any other ideas about how to do that? If you want to do it differently? I think this is consistent with Robert's rules, as I read them anyway. Great. So who would like to start us off? Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, President Lindy. Um, so, couple comments. Um, well, I want to start with a question. Um, so, could someone in the administration just clarify this real quick? I think I know the right, just want to be certain on the record, how many non-title schools we have? Out of, what, sixty-five?
Can I have Ms. Murphy and Ms. Funtie sit right up front, so we can be available for any questions? Thank you. You can answer any other questions, and then Ms. Murphy will, will follow to that question?
Um, yeah, no, I, I can continue, that, that's fine. One of the questions I was going to bring up, actually, President Sellers brought it up, was about, um, using accrued sick leave and quarantining, which is just another reason. I think everybody knows where I fall on this. I adamantly support the superintendent's recommendation again. I think it should be longer, um, as I posed to the doctors when I was talking about a three-week span of time, verse two. I'm happy to talk about those reasons. One, giving us more time to procure testing supplies for schools, um, procuring masks for at least the three-to-five-year-olds, which I brought up the last meeting, that's, you know, students who are unable to be vaccinated. Um, respirators, if we wanted to do that, et cetera, and also giving teenagers an opportunity, if they wanted to get boosted, to get boosted. And as we know, the booster shot can make you pretty sick, you know, made me pretty sick. I was holed up for a few days. Um, and it would give the teenagers who wanted to get boosted, I think, time to do it. So that's why I think it should actually be longer. Um, but as we wait for the answer to the question, you know, I'll just say, uh, after hearing what I've heard tonight in the past week, I'm not going to rehash all of the reasons I think we should take a pause and go remote that I talked about last week, um, or that I've already brought up tonight. But to me, when we hear, and first of all, kudos to everybody at the Ed Center, and kudos to all the staff that are shuffling around to buildings to fill in, but if we're talking about the value of keeping our schools open, the doors open, is so that kids can learn better in person, it does not sound like that's what, what's happening. But it sounds like what's happening, that the administration is spending a tremendous amount of time and effort to shuffle people around, just so we can say we're keeping the schools open. And, you know, two years ago, teachers were heroes. Today, anybody can do their job. We're lowering requirements, being a substitute is not easy. Getting kids to just sit down and do busy work, pardon me, I hate to say that, but even if that's the goal, a person with no training with students cannot get twenty kids to be quiet in thirty-five minutes. I promise you, that is very difficult. And so I find it insulting to the profession. I also find it insulting that we're asking people to use accrued sick leave, and we're doing all of this for what? Because it doesn't sound like it's for learning. If we have kids warehoused in gymnasium or study hall, it sounds like we're keeping our schools open for some other reason, which makes me uncomfortable. I don't know what it is, but it doesn't sound like it's for learning. And so I need to say that. And the reason I ask this question, and we'll get the answer here, it looks like, now.
Yes, sir. Out of our sixty-five schools, fifty-four are Title I.
So eleven are not?
Correct.
And if you look at the total number of people that responded, four thousand seven hundred, fifty percent non-title, that's representative of a lot of those schools. I will not say all. My point is, the number is lower for the vast majority of schools who are taught, who say, please let us stay remote so we can get a handle on our lives and what's going on. And it is a much smaller portion, because we are not reaching the families that are the vast majority of our district. And I think that needs to be highlighted, because if you look at the numbers on the slide thirty-one of the presentation, we have a ton of non-title schools, and it is this teeny population, and they're an important population. But the vast population in our district, lower-income and black families, who are being attacked by this virus consistently for the past two years, are not being heard.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Vice President Jones.
Yes, um, I'll be very straightforward about, um, my recommendations. Um, I think if this, I think what we did last week, we were at a point of indecisiveness, and I agree with our community that that's not where we want to be tonight. And, uh, I have thought a lot about it. I think it really helped to listen to the, uh, experts, and I am going to support the superintendent's recommendation for a short, um, remote period. Um, we have to get our staff stabilized. I, I agree with Mr. Morosky, that what we're doing, trying to shuffle staff and hire people and get people in place, if there's no real value to that, other than just putting a body in the, in the classroom, then we don't need to be doing that. Administration can spend their time on board, not saying this isn't important, but doing the things that they are, that they need to do. Um, the, the medical experts spoke about the peak of the virus being in two weeks or something, I, I may get that wrong, but that the virus could peak, but one of the things that one of them said is, um, this, this, while the peak may, I mean, while, uh, taking a break may lead to some sort of change, they weren't sure if this is guaranteed or what. So whatever decision we make, we may be here in another two weeks having the same conversation. That's just the nature of this beast that we're dealing with, you know? And unfortunately, we don't have the right answer. We have to make the best decision for the students and our staff right now. So I am putting in my recommendation and support for the superintendent's recommendation. Oh, I just want to add too, just real quick
Yes, ma'am.
That I do, I support, um, reinforcing our protocols. I, I, I sense that there's been some lapse of enforcement around that. We got a little bit too comfortable. I also highly support sanitizing the buildings on a much more regular basis. And if we have to get an outside cleaning company in here to quit, then we need to do that, because the classrooms, I, I think we're just kind of glazing over that a little bit. That's right.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Martin.
Um, well, I think the presentation was great. I am very informative. I am going to overwhelmingly support the superintendent's recommendation. I'm very, very concerned about the return date being firm. I think that when our families experience remote last year, they're a little, once bitten twice shy, so they do not want to have a date of, uh, January twenty-fourth, and then that moved again, or that's extended. I think that is a serious concern, um, that I've heard, that, that I've seen, and I, and I, I just would ask that interim superintendent, am I, you and your staff, your principals your, um, principals, who work really, really hard to increase these sub-staffing issues that we have to support the current staff that we, that we have out. I think it's, um, it's disheartening to listen to the teachers have to go through the things that they're going through. But, I also would implore you to please take this, this time to, um, to resolve those issues. That I know you all can. I'm very concerned about our middle's being in buildings unmasked and unable to get vaccinated. So, um, really, really wanting the air purifiers that someone spoke about, the class sizes being reduced so that we don't have the overcrowding. I just want you to take the time necessary so that we can come back on the twenty-fourth and that when we come back, it is the, um, the best that it can be. But, I, I do support, um, I do support.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Uh, there's Ms. Weinberg.
Um, I first wanna just say thank you so much for providing all of the information and the data and having the medical experts sharing their, um, obviously their medical opinion on whether we should be remote or whether we should be in person. Um, I definitely want to take this opportunity to express that whatever decision we decide on, um, it's going to be a difficult decision, obviously. But, I do wanna make sure that we are putting our students first. And with the data that you have given us and with the presentations, and just making sure that things are safe and done safe for our kids. Um, I will go with the recommendation for the superintendent, even though I know that remote was very difficult for some teachers, students, and families. I do ask that, as we are moving forward, I ask for the parameters of return and just really making sure that we have the necessary things in place, such as increasing our staffing, cleaning. Cleaning is very, very vital. If we're not cleaning these rooms, the classrooms, the schools, we're gonna be back in the same situation. And I do not want to be back in the same situation. So, um, that's all that I wanted to add.
Thank you, Ms. Weinberg. Uh, Ms. Bolden.
Yes, thank you very much. I don't think it'll come as any surprise to anybody, but, um, I'm not in favor of the recommendation, largely because, uh, I think all but one time last year and into this year, my position was that the children are safer in school. I have not been a party to the romanticizing of remote that has occurred in these, in these days, uh, with this new COVID. And, and very frankly, remember the attendance rate for remote, uh, as was published last year when we talked about it. Or that we lost so many instructional days and that we had to accelerate, uh, so much effort this year because of the lost time. I think ten days or six days or five days or twelve days, uh, is, is too much to lose. Uh, I appreciate that many of our families are gonna be able to do this almost comfortably. And many of our students are going to be able to be successful. But, I believe that the vast majority of families and students are gonna have trouble with the remote. I also worry about the social and emotional efforts. Even if we're having apparently chaos in our district, uh, through all this effort that everybody's made, which I think is heroic, uh, from superintendent on down. Um, I, I, I'm sorry that it's being portrayed as some great failure. I think, once again, it's a great effort to try to get this done and keep our kids in school. And I applaud that. But, my, my real issue is, you know, the buses have run, the buildings have been open, the nutrition is happening, the medical piece is happening. And more particularly, I think it is better to have the kids who ever want to be here and feel like they can be here, to actually have some kind of programmatic thing happening for them. And those families who worry about it, then if the schools are open, they can keep their kids at home. I, I think there's a way of, of, of dealing with that. And I, again, I wanna compliment everybody who's tried to do this. I know it's hard. It's very hard. Everything we did last year was hard. So, we're in a national crisis, so be it. But, I do think, I feel strongly, even listening to the science people today, even listening to the, the doctors, and even looking at the statistics of what we've tried to do and the attendance rate, I think it still is reasonable to do it school by school. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Bolden. Mr. Craig.
So, I think, uh, I think this is, again, as everyone has said, this is kind of a choice between two bad choices, right? This is a decision between two things that'll negatively affect somebody, some way, in some form, in some fashion. And I think that's what the real struggle for a lot of us is here. My concern really in going remote is that I don't think it will change our staffing levels in two weeks. And my real concern with that is that I don't think part of the problem with our staffing levels is that they're not getting sick at the school. They're not getting sick in their interactions with the students at the school. They're getting sick in general public. And if our staff is still out in some of these same spaces, in those same areas, and with some of those same exposures, are we gonna be sitting here on, you know, in two weeks with the same issues of low staffing levels in our schools and having to have the same conversation? But, I think the thing that does lift me more towards supporting the recommendation is this, the idea that we would be taking steps in that period of time to ensure that our schools are equipped with necessary masks, equipped with the necessary cleaning utensils, being prepared in our schools, maybe even doing more of the recruitment of subs into our schools. If we were doing that as a manner of reset, I would feel more comfortable in saying, yes, I would go with the recommendation. Because I don't think the recommendation, again, would be about the safety of our school building as a whole, but more in can we get protocols in place? Can we reset the dynamics within our schools with, with, within how we as a district operate? And so, if that is what we would be doing over that period of time, I could see, see supporting the recommendation. I, I, but again, I would say, come this next time around, it would be a lot harder for me to support it, in large part because I don't think we're going to see measurable increases in educational value from remote learning, any more than I believe we're gonna see measurable increases in educational value from a, an untrained teacher, untrained person sitting in a classroom to each of moving kids into a gym as a means of keeping them in school. So, I think we have basically two ways of not providing some marketable educational value out of it. Um, I do wanna also highlight on the concern that, uh, Mr. Morosky brought up with, with regard to our processes and our understanding of how we are addressing teachers who have not tested positive, but are, were in close contact or were deemed or waiting on a results in testing. And I think that's something else we need to re, uh, revise and look at. Because I do wanna make sure that we're not asking, especially if we're going remote, that we're not asking teachers to take leave, be not involved in their classroom setting when we're remote. If they're not showing signs of testing positive, if they're not tested positive, if they're not showing signs of having COVID and if they're not, um, again, not interacting with the students directly, I'm not sure if there's any reason to require that period of time with, which they would maybe quarantining, to be a period of time where they're not able to still do, still perform and do their task. And so, I think that's a question if we're gonna go remote, is that conversation around how we're addressing it? I didn't know that, if that was necessarily answered. I know earlier it was asked whether or not a, and I think Dr. Moffett asked this question, whether or not a teacher who is quarantining, um, is allowed to still participate or engage with their students in remote learning? And I think the answer was that if they're using sick leave, they could not. But, the only reason we're, they're using sick leave is because we would require them to use sick leave if they're quarantining. So, I think maybe that's a point of clarification there. If we're going to remote and we say that a teacher who is required to quarantine, are they able to still engage the educational process and teach their students remotely and not have to use any sick leave in that process? And so, maybe that clarification would help as well.
Ms. Bunty, can you speak to sick leave and quarantine?
So, last year, we were able to, we had a different federal leave policy that enabled us to allow teachers not to use sick leave. Um, we forwarded the days to them through that policy. That expired, we no longer have that. So, um, we have been having internal conversations about this very thing as early as this afternoon. So, we will make sure that we get an answer to you by tomorrow.
Thanks, Mr. Craig. I think everybody but me's had a chance to go on a first round. And so, I'll share a couple of questions that I have and kind of where I am on this. And then we'll take stock of whether anybody has other things they wanna add or ask about. Before I share kinda what I'm currently thinking, uh, I did have a couple of follow-up questions. Um, some were about the parent survey. I think multiple things seem true at once. Ten thousand respondents feels pretty exciting, frankly, I think, to hear from that many parents. Uh, I've certainly been in board meetings where we don't have any disaggregation of who we're hearing from. And we can see Title I versus non-Title I. So, I think we've taken some pretty significant steps forward on this front over the course of the last year to eighteen months. That doesn't mean it's perfect. Uh, I think there's still room for improvement as well. But, one of the, um, you know, can, can you, um, Ms. Murphy, talk a little bit about why we should or shouldn't feel confident in the numbers? And just to get really specific, I've heard from some parents who didn't receive it. Um, one of those parents is my wife, uh, and I also didn't receive it. And I have kids in CPS. And so, I know, I know that there are others as well. Other questions that have come up are things like, can somebody take it more than once? Or, um, uh, yeah, and so that, can you just speak to that a little bit?
Those are great questions. I appreciate them. I can share with you separately the email they have on file for your family, if you'd like me to do that, just so you know where they are telling us the, the, uh, survey went for you personally.
You're saying it might be Lindy family user error?
Not sure.
It's, it's very possible.
I will share with you what they have. But, at the same time, uh, our contacts at POSIP did say that if there are families in that situation, they feel like we're not getting the survey. Or usually we get the survey, but something happened this time. They can contact me and I can put them directly into contact with our POSIP person, who can tell them this is the email and this is the number that we're sending a text to. Typically, a family will get an email and a text message. In your case, I'm not sure what happened. They did, uh, share with me an email address that I can share with you. In terms of can, uh, a family provide two votes? I am told by POSIP, and this is a professional organization, this is what they do, that they cannot provide two votes. Um, if it appears that way, they do have a way to pull whatever the second vote may have been. Usually the same. Uh, and then you had a third part, sorry.
I, I don't think so. Just, is there anything else in terms of, um, what, what, what gives you really good confidence that we can rely on those numbers?
So, this was the highest return rate we've had on any of these surveys that I've been involved in the past two years, at twenty-nine percent. Uh, the next highest was the vaccination questionnaire that we did maybe a month or so ago. And that, I believe, was at twenty-seven percent. So, in talking with POSIP today, they're all falling around the same type of response rates that we've had the last couple of years, at least, that I've been involved with POSIP.
That's very helpful, Ms. Murphy. I, I really do appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I think for my part, um, the, the survey does a lot of work with me. Um, I think I personally would really like our schools to stay open for in-person. I personally much prefer the school-by-school approach. And, and I, I think comes from a host of reasons, most of which I think the medical team kind of addressed. And it makes me frustrated and angry that you can live outside of Cincinnati in the suburbs and have access to schools that remain open for in-person learning and live inside the city and not have that. I think that is, that is an equity issue. I think that is something that's a source of frustration for me. And at the same time, I'm not every parent. I'm one parent. And we asked parents what they thought and they told us. And I think it, it requires more than I feel is appropriate to substitute my judgment for the judgment of what we heard in the survey. Particularly because if you look at the Title I school parents, it's an even larger share of parents, uh, who would like to do this short-term virtual option. So, I think where, where that has me is, um, are there things we can do for the other group of families that are gonna be really frustrated and really sad about a move to virtual learning, even if it is a short one? And so, that led me to have questions like, uh, is it possible to do things like use, uh, weather days for some of these days? And then make those days up later on over the course of the summer? So, that kids aren't actually missing out on in-person school, we're just moving it around? You know, or are there, um, any other creative ideas out there? Are we can, can we make the, the window that we do this as short as possible? Um, and so, I did wanna just hear from the administration what, what you all thought about that. Because I think there's gonna be a, a very large group of families for whom this is really discouraging news. And I'd like us to be doing everything that we can for them.
As far, as far as using calamity days, we're still early in the winter season. So, we need to keep those days together for.
We just recently had the cold day.
How many do we have?
If we, if we push back the days, it will affect summer learning and possible graduation. Um, so, we really wanna preserve our days. We can, but it's at a risk of, uh, graduation and summer learning opportunities. When we looked at streaming opportunities, that was, uh, really based on a lot around staff being able to, uh, do both. And we heard from our teachers, it was double work between maintaining an in-person classroom and teaching, uh, remotely. And we still consider it. In this situation, uh, we do not have certified teachers covering the classroom. So, that is, um, a reason to pause. We would have to think about the training of the people who are covering, like security custodians, um, in, in helping them be able to manage a, uh, streaming class or, um, an in-person learning opportunity.
Um, and I think the, the last, um, question I wanted to ask was, um, you know, I think Mr. Craig brought up a really, really important point when he said, you know, it, it may be the case that we're not in a better position two weeks from now when it comes to how many staff members have COVID. Um, and I think if, for, for me to vote in support of the administration's recommendation, which I'm inclined to do, I think both because of the parent survey and because I think if we're on the fence, we should give you a chance to do what you think the right thing to do is. How, how clear can we be with, with parents and with the public about, you know, what are, what's, what's, is it we are for sure coming back on X date? Is it we're coming back on X date if A, B, and C are met? Like, if not, we're gonna do, because I'm like, I think the clearer we can be that this is not going to be the new normal. But, we have every intention and a real plan to get back to in-person. I, I think that would, that would be something simple.
What we can assure you is our actions to recruit substitutes, to really form, um, a district-wide parent collaboration to cover classes, really to address the staffing, right? We can assure you that we are looking at other mitigations and, um, from the K and ninety-five mask, um, and seeing the availability and getting that out, especially, I, I believe it was a board member, Morosky, who talked about at least looking at it for our preschools. We can assure you that we're gonna go back to the drawing board and really look at and audit our, uh, facilities and custodial team. I would remind you that those same people who have to clean up the classroom are covering for recess, lunch. So, that's, those essential operations, um, are not in place because we are monitoring students. Um, so, during that two-week pause to allow for remote learning, all of our staff will be at work to ensure the cleanliness of our building, to continue to recruit, to have certificated certified staff in front of students. This will allow our staff who have left, uh, uh, or, or the quarantine to work from home. So, that's what we can guarantee. I can't guarantee you what Omicron is gonna look like in two weeks. I, I can't. But, I can, can guarantee you our actions and our response to the virus.
I, I appreciate that. So, we've gone through once. Do people have other questions that they'd like to ask? I appreciate that. So we've gone through once. Do people have other questions that they'd like to ask or respond to, Ms. Bolden?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, and I, because I thought it was a great question from Member Weinberg, too. Just what is going to indicate that we're coming back on the 24th? You know, I don't like these trigger things, as I think I mentioned in my question I sent to you, but so that there's some magical number. But we know you're going to do all this. And we're, I think, somebody is hoping that somehow this particular variant is going to be on the downplay versus the uptick. I mean, I think that's whatever, what everyone hopes. But what can we say to the public besides what we're going to do? What will we be looking for? Because if this is going to be interpreted in public, what I think it is, is that here we go again. And if that's the case, we're in much deeper trouble than this is. So what can we say to the public that that, what is it, January 24th? Help me out with what we would be looking for or what we would be watching for, not just what we're going to try, what we're going to do.
Well, what we're looking for, that's the metrics that the team shared earlier. It is attending. So having clear communication in with our staff members on attendance and looking at, we have the COVID hotline. So that's what we've been using between the COVID hotline and staff attendance to ensure that our classrooms are covered. So we will continue to use that as a way to inform staffing. We hope that our actions that we're putting in place will allow for more people to be available to teach our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Anybody else have a second round question or a comment? Mr. Craig?
So I have two questions, just again revisiting this idea of what's remote education going to look like. And so we're sitting right now and saying we don't have sufficient teachers to cover our classroom settings as it exists in person. I'm just wondering how remote education will look. Are we sufficiently set up to be able to provide, you know, kind of substantive educational value to our students in remote learning at each school? Or is there going to be some changes that'll have to happen that will be more reflective of a school's classes being combined on remote education, or how that logistically will look?
A couple of things. We believe that our subs rate will be higher because it's virtual. That's one, to allowing more staffing available to cover classrooms virtually. Secondly, what we have done in the past, which worked out very well. If it's a third-grade classroom and a teacher is actually out and could not cover, because it's virtual, they were able to combine classrooms virtually. And there's a certified teacher now in front of that class. And then we didn't have to worry about safety precautions because it's virtual. So we have some, about a year of practice on how to virtually deliver instruction in the best way possible for our students.
Okay. And then I think you answered a little bit into some of what staffing, what staff will be doing in the building with regard to being remote, and that they will still be there servicing the building, cleaning the building, getting protocols set, ordering masks, whatever the case may be. But I think areas like, for instance, our nursing levels, you know, particularly, we're not likely to see a huge growth in the number of nurses in the county that are going to come out of protocol and then be designated to, you know, the requisite spots again, as long as our hospital numbers are where they are as well. And so is there any relief expected in our nursing numbers from things like the National Guard being sent down to our hospitals and others to provide some relief?
No, I can't speak to the National Guard, but I can speak to the fact that CHD is actively recruiting. They have several people in the pipeline. It takes them about six weeks to onboard someone, so we're watching those numbers very carefully. And I did want to go back and clarify one thing that I was remiss in not doing. So if we have a staff member who is a close contact, who is fully vaccinated and asymptomatic, they don't have to quarantine. So there are folks who are not vaccinated or symptomatic, that those are the folks who are quarantining. But we're looking at that definitely.
Okay. And so is that something, and I guess maybe just one little add-on to that, is that something that is going to be clear with regards to remote work as well? That if you are fully vaccinated, I mean, quite honestly, there's a little bit of meat that says if you're fully vaccinated, close contacts, that because you're doing remote education, I'm not seeing necessarily the value in following the same particular protocols with regards to quarantining? And that, you know, because you're not in a classroom during that period of time? But I can certainly understand wanting to keep a normal, consistent process to it. So I didn't know if there's any differences in protocols in that?
We're going to have a conversation with our legal counsel and make sure that we are in a good place. And then we will make sure that we get back to you tomorrow and then be able to share that communication with our staff.
I have a question.
Okay, yes. Thank you, Mr. Craig. We'll do Dr. Moffett for round two, Mr. Marowski for round two.
I have two questions. Were there any schools that had no staff?
We gave, we sent out the, is it this one? This sheet, the list of schools, yeah.
So you see in the, I would say those would be the... And then can we explore options? I'm really concerned about this return date, and I really want to make sure that students, you know, that we can come back on the 24th, that this is not something so long. Is it possible to explore options for students that want to, that don't want to switch schools? So the CDA is not an option, but would need a remote option? Not necessarily globally across our district? Does my question make sense? So if a parent is like, hey, you know, I'm in Carson, we don't feel like it's safe, but we need something, and we don't want to switch schools. So we talk about those options on the 24th, if it's 25th. And they're just a little concerned about coming back in person. Maybe our numbers aren't where we want them to be, or they want them to be. Can we explore again options for them to have something remote that's not requiring a CDA option?
We can discuss it. We tried to do that last year. I know, well, we have now a new IRN based on what the state is requiring us to do, which is a clear separation. That's why we had to separate the virtual school and the CBS. And they want the school to entirely be a remote virtual option. So CDA now has their own IRN number. But I can go back and research, but the, because of accountability measures, the state is requiring clear instructional models for schools. So we just passed a fall. We applied for a second IRN. But we can go back and ask that question of the state.
Thanks, Dr. Moffett. You're in good shape. Okay. Next was Mr. Marowski.
Thank you, President Lindy. This is kind of a throwback to something Mr. Craig was talking about. I just want to give this superintendent an opportunity to correct me if I'm wrong. But, Mr. Craig, when you were talking about going remote and not supporting it if it was for health reasons, but for all those other logistical reasons, I was under the impression that was what largely we were talking about, was so we could iron out those logistical reasons. Because like the doctor said, we don't know where the virus is coming from. Even though we also do know that congregating a bunch of people together is not necessarily helping curb the spread, but more so so that we can logistically work out what we need to work out. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that that, I don't want to speak for the superintendent, but...
I think I understood what you said.
Go remote so we can figure out the logistical, the subs and everything else? And, okay. And also, I don't know if we've done this. It's just something, you know, throw out there. You know, we have a vast alumni network. I don't know how easy it is to tap into them to see if they want to sign up, you know, if they have the credentials to sub for us. I'm sure we have alumni who, I don't know if that's a route we've already gone, maybe we have. So I don't want to step on any toes, but I figure I should throw it out.
Thank you for Mr. Marowski. Ms. Jones?
I don't even know if this has any significance, but this is like deja vu. I mean, it really is. And I say that not trying to make light of it, but I guess I'm approaching this from the point that we're in a pandemic, we're not perfect, we've done our best, we've made mistakes, and we have to move forward. And I, for me, I'm a little bit uncomfortable sort of rehashing a lot of this. I do feel like I've heard lots of good suggestions for moving forward. I've heard things like, we haven't failed, which I agree with. I don't think we failed. I think we didn't make a decision last week, but I don't think we failed. I think the superintendent and her team have done what we asked them to do. I think it's realistic that we may be back here on the 24th having the same conversation. We just don't know. And so I just don't think we're living in a perfect world. I know that's kind of giddy and whatever, but we have to make the best decision. And I think tonight, we have to make the best decision for right now, with all the suggestions and things that we've asked the superintendent to follow up on. And then when we come back with her, with that measure of, we need staff. If that, if the staff are there, we'll be back in the building. If they're not, we're going to be here again, having the same conversation. So it shouldn't be a surprise to people.
Thank you. I want to make sure I ask, we've gotten a second from everybody except me and Ms. Weinberg. I think the floor is yours, if you'd like it, Ms. Weinberg. And if you don't, that's okay. You're good. Okay, so I'm a little bit going to share just a couple of things, because I've come my second time. And then would like us to move forward, maybe one minute or less, if we can have a last comment. But just because we can go all night and it's late for folks. I think for my part, I just want to be very clear from what I think we are saying. We can clarify this as we vote in a second. That this is a recommendation that is coming from the administration that is based on staffing only. Like, this is, this is, this is not, I would distinguish that from, we're worried that our schools are not safe places for kids. We do feel that our schools are safe places for kids and teachers. We reiterate our commitment to in-person learning. We have a challenge at the moment, that we have a huge number of schools who don't have the staff to be in the open.
That is correct.
Okay. And so then, as we think about the return, the return will be on January 24th if we have staffing levels sufficient to open those schools well and safely. And there's a series of things that are happening between now and then to try to make that happen. I'd like to personally volunteer as a, whether it's a substitute or as a parent volunteer or whatever, in whatever school where I can be helpful. But I think anybody else who's listening and would like to volunteer will take you. And we want to get as close as we can, as quickly as we can. So that was my last piece. And then, Ms. Bolden, one minute?
Just several points of clarification real quickly, so the...
I'm going to set a timer.
Public now. Set the clock. The building attendance will be taken during remote 12 days, too.
Yes.
Teacher by teacher. Good. Teachers can work at home while they're doing the remote instruction.
Yes.
Those people that are not teachers and not directly involved with instruction, are they to report to the building so that there's things that are accomplished that we've mentioned? Or what's the situation, what's the determination?
We did several things. So it depends on the position. So for instance, building custodians, plant operators will report to the building. However, we had reading specialists doing small groups online remotely. We had power professionals who had access to technology due remote. But the building was open to allow them if they did not have the technology, because we do not have devices for our power professionals, that they can have access to those devices at our school. So it just really depends on the position.
And will nutritional services be continued as well? And will any medical services be continued?
For food services, yes. And we will do the pickup, multi-day pickup that we have done in the past. And then our clinics remain open.
So thank you. And then to move us forward here, it's late, and I appreciate everybody. And I think where we are now, what it said I wanted to do was give the public a chance to weigh in, give everybody a chance to share, and then respond to what other people said. I think we've done that. I think the proposal from the administration, and I do think we should take a vote on that, is that we move, based on the superintendent's recommendation, to virtual until the 24th of January. I'm trying to speak really slowly for Treasure Wagner, but I should probably slow down. Because of staffing concerns, and I'd like that to be in there, so that it's really clear that that's what's driving this. And if that changes the way people want to vote, that's okay. But because of staffing. And that we have, we will return on the 24th if the staffing levels are sufficient to open the schools. So that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Weinberg, a second? We've had our discussion. So can we get a roll call when you're ready, Treasure Wagner?
I'm sorry, who made the motion originally?
I'm happy to be the one on the motion, listen. Okay.
Ms. Bolton? Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Ms. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay, so that takes care of board matters on that item. I think, I'd like to just get a pulse from the group. It's late, it's been a long meeting. Do people need a minute to hit a restroom and then come back? Would people like to power through, try to get out of here in about 10 minutes? Okay, we're powering through. Okay, transportation, Ms. Bolden, we're going to do this real quick.
I just carried that forward from the executive session. And I don't know if, it looks like our Transportation Department, or, excuse me, our Chief Operations Officer has something to share.
I think we also have this on tap for an upcoming meeting. I think on the 24th is what we talked about.
The administration has something. I'm just following up. We had submitted a memo of questions, charts, graphs, and we're available to answer any questions. I believe that went out, did it go out last week, Ms. Alano, or?
Sure. Hello, Board Member Bolton. Yes, as a matter of fact, it was sent out last week. And Board Member Weinberg was kind enough to share some insights to make it more clear, the report. So I took her suggestions and sent it back out this afternoon with some points to make it more clear on the data. But you should have all received that this afternoon. It was the questions. So I think like 18, it was answers to about 18 of your questions concerning transportation and numbers of those who were taking advantage of the transportation they were offering and those who weren't, along with metro routes and things of that nature.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we thanked you and the administration for voluminous effort. And also thank you for resending or making some corrections based upon Member Weinberg's observations. And I know we're going to be talking about it in finance on the 21st. And I'm sure there's other times that we'll be talking about it as well, even before then. But I just would encourage all board members to read the response. It's very illuminating, and I think it will help us, help the administration.
If it's okay, I'd like to just really say thank you to the transportation team, because it was definitely a collaborative effort. Everyone was digging into the data to provide this comprehensive report for the board. Thank you.
Wonderful. So we're going to move very quickly then to resolutions. And just a note for the new board members, we tried to get out to you in advance, like an annotated copy that explained what some of these things were. My hope was that makes you feel a little bit more comfortable voting in support of these things. There's a mix of things we do every year and most recent recommendations from the Policy Committee. I also hope that means we can move fairly quickly through these. So I'm going to propose to introduce a resolution, which is the first one, which is a resolution to join the Ohio School Boards Association. Folks, receive the copy of that, and I present that resolution as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Next, we have a resolution to join the Ohio School Board Association Legal Assistance Fund. Is there anyone who would like to present that one?
Just did. You just, you did.
That was number one, number two, right? Which is the Legal Assistance Fund?
Yeah, you just said it.
Great. Oh, I got it.
There you go.
And Ms. Bolton seconds it.
Roll call.
Great, roll call.
Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett? Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Ms. Jones, would you do three?
Will I do three? Sure. Okay. I would like to present to the board for their consideration a resolution to appoint a representative to the Ohio School Boards Association Board of Trustees. In our organizational meeting, we agreed that that would be moi. So I would like to present that for approval.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Mr. Marowski, would you mind doing number four?
I would not. I am proud to present a resolution approving standing authorizations for the superintendent to be able to carry out necessary district duties for the calendar year 2022. I present it as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Ms. Bolton, would you mind doing five? I'm trying to call on tenured folks.
Thank you. A resolution amending board policy regarding policy 3139, employee discipline.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that a roll call?
I'm catching up. Hold on. Okay, I'm sorry. Mine are in a different order. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. I think if I didn't get lost, and it's possible that I did, we're on number six, which is going to go to Mr. Marowski of the Policy Committee.
That is correct. I'm proud to present a resolution amending board policy 3130. I always add a little commentary to our policies. This is largely an administrative change, just to be more compliant. It notes that without mutual agreement and abiding by collective argument agreements, we cannot transfer folks to lesser positions of lesser responsibility. I present it as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Vice President Jones, roll call.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Number seven is going to come from Ms. Bolton.
Me again.
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution rescinding board policy 4130, assignment and transfer.
I think we're on 3139. Is what I had for seven. Is that what you've got here?
We already did 3139.
We didn't.
It went out of order.
All right. I'm looking at an order that's a little different from the others, and I apologize. So Eve, you just did 4140? 4130? So this is...
And your name is...
Okay. I may be looking at an old version. So we're on 4130, and Eve has introduced it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So given that we're out of order a little bit, can someone help me with which ones we have yet to do?
We haven't done the resolution approving the authorization of treasurer to carry out necessary duties.
I have no idea. Yes.
Nor have we done policy 3140 or 6835.
Can you say those two numbers real quickly again, Jen?
Policy 3140?
3140.
Right. Which is the resolution amending board policy termination and resignation.
Yep. And which others?
Resolution board policy 6835, which is the Audit Committee Charter.
Okay.
4139, which is employee discipline.
Uh huh.
4140, termination and resignation, or is that duplicative?
Okay. So I have the treasurer authorization. I have 3140, 6835.
Correct.
4139.
Right.
And 4130.
4140.
4140.
And then the eligible subsidy of transportation and approving the yellow bus stops.
Okay. So we're going to move through these as quickly as we can. So this is going to be a resolution approving standard and authorization for the treasurer to be able to carry out necessary duties for calendar year 2022. And I introduce that one as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Bolton? Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So we'll do next, the resolution amending board policy 3140 on termination and resignation, introduced as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Bolton? Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Mr. Marowski, I have you for 6835.
You do. It is my pleasure to present a resolution amending board policy 6835, the Audit Committee Charter. To sort of clean it up, we've changed the names of our committees from policy to policy and equity, finance, the budget financing growth, et cetera. There is significant change in red line fashion that you will notice about the Audit Committee chairs, and you can see all of this in the resolution I present it as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. For 4139, I have as mine, which is a resolution rescinding an old board policy around employee discipline. I present that as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who's second is it?
I'm president.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. And for 4140, 40, I have Mr. Marowski as well. Is that right?
Yes, you do. It is my pleasure to present a resolution rescinding board policy 4140. It always feels good to rescind. We're cleaning up our house. We had 3140 earlier regarding termination and resignation. This one is duplicative, also about termination and resignation. So we are recommending that we rescind it out of policy committee and present it as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. I just appreciate everybody working through this. We're down to our last two. I think for resolution on students eligible, was Dr. Moffett?
I present a resolution approving students eligible for subsidy reimbursement in lieu of transportation. Simply stated, we've got students where it's been determined that it's impractical to provide transportation, filling now 153, and I submit it as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. And Ms. Bolton, last one, please. Is it the yellow school bus?
Resolution approving yellow bus stops for the 2122 school year. Appreciate the transportation department sending it to us now, but we are, we were supposed to pass that 30 days into the school year, so we've got to be careful about that. Actually, I think it'd be great for transportation folks to really, I know they have done this already, look at the requirements for bus stops. Because it would be fascinating even to look at some of the metro ones, which don't count, but also any of the yellow bus or van stops. I'm sure there's some real issues there for all of us, but thank you for forwarding it. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay. We are now on the Superintendent of Schools section. Is there a report from the interim superintendent in addition to the printed report?
Yes. We will quickly go, I will quickly go through this report. I know we have been here a while. I would like to start by saying thank you again to all of our staff members for going the extra mile. I would like to remind families that our high school and magnet lottery will occur simultaneously this year from December 7th through March 11th. You can find those guides on our website at cps-k12.org. Here's a reminder that our vaccination and booster clinic next opening is January 13, 5 to 7:30 at Rockdale. Walk-ins are welcome. We would like to recognize and remind everyone the National Day of Racial Healing is January 18th, and it will be observed on Dr. Martin Luther King's Day. Some kudos. This is a big one. CPS earns gold award as a healthy work site. The award recognizes Ohio employers that have demonstrated a commitment to their employees' health by providing health and wellness programs. Thank you to our partners at Tribe State for nominating us. Congratulations to Aiken High School. They were presented with a $10,000 grant from the Educational Theater Foundation New Pathway Initiative. Aiken will perform Aladdin Jr. April 15th and April 14th. So excited to see that.
Great.
Next slide, please. Another recognition for our district. CPS is a 2021 meal champion. It was selected based on providing meals during the closure.